Okay, good evening. It's Monday, September 8th. Seven o'clock, we have several committees meeting tonight. City and Safety Services, Planning and Development, Finance and Personnel, and the Transportation Committee. And then we will have a special session to deal with some ordinances that need quick action. Just before we start, I want to remind council members, and particularly committee chairs, that when you schedule committee meetings, they need to be in this room so they can be recorded. So that if a... We're doing citizens, we're doing work for the citizens of Athens. And if they want to see or hear what's going on, we need to have that available. Or, you know, if you don't have it in this room, you can make arrangements with the AV crew to go to another room in the building because we have portable equipment. But you need to make sure that all committee meetings are available for videotaping and viewing later on. So Mayor Wiler, I believe you're gonna kind of start the ball rolling, or is that not true?
I think it's actually City and Safety Services Committee, so this would be covering nuisance parties.
I assume the chair is gonna come in.
Okay, so we'll go from there. And the chair is?
It'll be I.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. As was stated, the first thing our agenda tonight is to talk about the nuisance party amendment. And before we get into the actual specifics of the amendment itself, I do want to give everyone a little background on the ordinance, actually on kind of where the ordinance came from, I guess for lack of a better way to phrase it. The Coalition Advocating for Responsible Drinking Decisions, or CART, came forward to J-PAC, to the Joint Police Advisory Council, which again is a council that came out of a memorandum of understanding chapter within the agreement between Ohio University and the city to form the Joint Police Advisory Council. So CART came to the, came to J-PAC to start the conversation going about the possibility of having what was referred to as a social hosting ordinance. And in long-drawn-out conversations, which was good, because that's what J-PAC is for, we came to the kind of the understanding within J-PAC that maybe social hosting isn't the right way to go, but we do need to amend and look more deeply into the nuisance party ordinance, which we did. And again, that was started under a subcommittee, which was made up of Paula Rand Mosley, Chief Pyle, Chief Powers from OUPD, George Sorinco, myself, Caleb Baldroof, Chris Nysley, Terry Coons from CART, and then Joel Newby. Again, most of those individuals being members of J-PAC under this subcommittee. And spent quite a few months with a lot of open dialogue, talking about, you know, how we would go about revising or amending the nuisance party ordinance. So what ultimately came from that was a suggestion brought forward to council through J-PAC, approved by J-PAC. And I'll just take a second to read the amendment itself. It's changing the penalty for the nuisance party ordinance. A violation of Section 9.14.02 shall be an administrative offense requiring a fine of $250. Any person cited with a first offense of this section who does not pay the required administrative fee within 30 days shall receive a minor misdemeanor citation in court, providing notice and the opportunity to be heard, which shall serve as an appeal process. Any offender who persists in such violation after reasonable warning or request to desist by a member of the Athens City Police Department, or after receiving an administrative citation, shall be guilty of a misdemeanor of the fourth degree. Any subsequent offense within six months of a second, six months of the second offense shall be punishable as a misdemeanor of the fourth degree. So in essence, what this is saying is that the ordinance would be changed initially to an administrative or a civil fine, a civil penalty. But if there's a repeat offense within a specified amount of time, then it becomes a criminal offense on the second go-around. We felt that this was striking a pretty good balance between the social ordinance, the social hosting concept, I should say, because there never was an ordinance, was a pretty heavy, heavily levied penalty right off the bat, which could lead an individual, start them down the path of misdemeanor charges and having a police record. So with this, again, like I said, under the first offense, and if it were the first and only offense, it would be a civil penalty associated with it. No, Chief Pyle is here tonight. I don't know if anyone wants to address any specific questions to the police chief or to myself.
I don't know that there's a section missing in this.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Patterson, can I, may I point out that there is a, probably needs to be an amendment to this proposed language?
This is the draft ordinance that you'd be giving?
The draft ordinance. So before I say anything else, there was a proposed section for 91403, which is the section that covers patrons of a nuisance party being ordered to leave. We had also recommended that that persistent violation or after warning of that section be also a fourth-degree misdemeanor, whereas right now it is a minor misdemeanor. I mean, that's for an enforcement, from an enforcement standpoint, law enforcement doesn't have time to cite 30 people if they refuse to leave a party to actually handwrite citations. So we, we made that recommendation, and I believe the law director was in support of that section as well.
Thank you.
Sir?
It seems to me that at one time there was, there was an issue that we tried to find the leader of the pack, the person who was hosting this party or something. But now it sounds to me like it's kind of crowd control. Is that, I mean, you issue everybody there?
We, it's a, it's, the whole enforcement of this ordinance has become a mediation, so to speak. And so this sort of, changing this ordinance won't change the way we enforce it. It will only change the penalties. What we do now is, is what we will do even after this is amended, if it is amended. We'll find the people responsible for hosting the party and we'll warn them.
Okay.
You know, right now, if they're cooperative, it ends there. We shut down the party, and they're given a warning. If there are four people that live in the house and three of them are having a party, we warn the three that are having the party and leave the fourth alone. And then we ask all the patrons to leave.
Okay.
So now, under the current ordinance, all three of those residents could be cited. Typically, we just decide, cite one. We find one that's most culpable, or we let them decide among the three. We kind of deal with them that way. Because it doesn't matter ultimately who, under this proposal, it wouldn't matter who received the citation because it would be a civil citation with no criminal record. But under the current ordinance, there are, we have witnessed some arguments back and forth as to who wants the minor misdemeanor on their record. So that's typically why we don't cite a lot for nuisance party. We really are after compliance to shut the party down, and so we hold the threat of citation over their head. So that's how that typically works.
We have council members who have...
Just a quick question for clarification. My understanding, if I'm hearing this correctly, we're trying to still hold people accountable, but decriminalize the potential, is that correct?
We've had, we've had some great success with decriminalizing noise ordinance, and we did that three years ago, I believe. We've had a lot of success with that. It's fair to the students and the people in that age group, I would say. And so we thought that, you know, fair is fair. We thought this is the right way to go about enforcing the nuisance ordinance. And because it typically affects more students than non-students. And it's fair that they not have a criminal record for having a party that gets a little out of hand.
And I would just comment, you've spent months in time talking with people on this issue in the J-PAC group, and working through with students, with officers, with everybody, trying to figure out a good solution to this. And you guys have worked at this for some time. And the fairness is evident to me in the rewording and the writing of what the amendments are. And again, young people, sometimes the learning curve is a little longer and...
It is.
You know, and the fact that you show up at their door, you talk to them, you discuss what the issues are, it gives them some, you know, it gives them some opportunity to say, you know, okay, we're backing off. Well, we get the point. And I think, it sounds to me, from a police point of view, that that's a good way to go. You're saying that that's, that's helpful.
Especially when there's alcohol involved. I watched a video this afternoon, this morning, in dispatch center. One of my officers showed a video, I don't know how they received it, but it was from a party this Saturday night, this past Saturday night on Palmer Street. There had been more than 100, 150 people in the front lawn of a house on Palmer Street, probably in the street as well, cheering on a person who was on the roof, asking them to dive off the roof. And they did. I watched that video. And we're talking here today about decriminalizing that kind of behavior. Because we're as much a teaching organization as we are an enforcement organization. And we don't, we look at that behavior first and feel anger that that kind of thing's going on in our community, and then we come to the realization that these are young people who are affected and possibly inebriated and affected by alcohol. And sometimes they just need somebody to say, that's not acceptable behavior. And I think that's the place to start. It doesn't mean that we can't arrest people after the fact. In fact, we put that through this ordinance, this proposal, if they continue to do it, it becomes a harsh criminal penalty. But at first, just like with the noise ordinance, let's start at a civil process, which I think the word is fitting in this case, to say, it's not okay.
Fair enough.
Thank you. Terrific.
I think, to follow on, I think that also it gives the opportunity for students to take responsibility when they're approached. I think right now, especially given a lot of the other kind of angst about police impacts and issues, that it gives the students responsibility to say, yes, we understand, we've been given a warning, and now we understand that it can escalate instead of just being, now it's escalated. And I think that it gives the students, and other people in the town, but I think we have to realize it's mostly students, the opportunity to take initiative and responsibility for themselves and show that they're good citizens and they're civil. And I, and I think that's fair. It's not only the city just giving them opportunity to not have a harsher, you know, fine or a harsher sentence put on their, like a record, a new record, gives them opportunity to behave like a citizen of Athens. And I think that's a lot of what we've been trying to do with a lot of students, is that we're all citizens, we all live together, and let's work together, so.
I agree.
Thank you.
Historically, from the background on it, I just say, I wanted to say, I really appreciate the way in which J-PAC, the Joint Police Advisory Commission, functioned for the discussions of all this. Historically, that Coalition on Alcohol Advocating Responsible Drinking Decisions, which was the committee that was looking at this, came forward because the high-risk drinking is what that Coalition was looking at and seeing that it's a significant public health and safety kind of danger. And based on an evaluation of the university by a national organization, these were some of the recommendations that came forward. So I just want to thank J-PAC and all the members and all the people who participated, students included, who helped us in the process.
Well, I'd like to thank the commission as well, the Coalition, for bringing this forward and being in throughout all the dialogue that was going on back and forth this morning. Mr. Morris, did you have a question?
Yeah, I got a quick question. So...
Go up to Mike.
Okay. So I, I just had a quick question. So if you do, if there are multiple owners of the house that are in the party situation, you know, how would the fines sort of break down? Would it be a $250 fine for each owner of the house, or would it just be one?
Depends on the circumstances, quite honestly. Under the current ordinance, if anybody who was responsible for holding a nuisance party could be cited, we've never done it that way.
Okay.
This doesn't really change who can be cited.
Yeah.
This has changed the penalty.
Yeah.
So like I did point out earlier, if there are three people in the house and three people are cited, all three of them would have the same fine. But typically, what we do is ask, just like we do with noise citations, we say, all right, who's the most responsible for organizing this party, or who wants this citation? Usually, they, they agree. If they don't, we pick somebody. And we cite them. But under the current ordinance, that person would then have a criminal record if they were convicted. Under this ordinance, it's akin to getting a parking ticket for the first violation administrative. So I wouldn't see our enforcement changing. I would see us probably bartering with the group to say, who wants the citation? If we got to a point of citation.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
An expensive parking ticket.
It would be an expensive parking ticket. It'd be on par with a handicap violation.
But at the same time, it's better than criminal record. And I know there's the methodology of expunging, sponging that record at a later date if need be. You have to go to the law director's office to get the particulars of that. Having experience watching the noise ordinance being enforced, a lot of it has to do with the situation, the confrontation, how they respond. And the idea is to shut the party down, pretty much, in terms of nuisance party. So therefore, you know, you're gonna say, who lives here, and everybody else out. So at that point, you have, you whittle it down, and after that, it depends on the circumstances as the chief is stating.
Can I ask one particular question? The citation is given to the name of the person or the address?
An individual who resides in that.
So if your officer two weeks later arrives back at that address, will you know whether that person was cited from two weeks prior?
We'd have access to, to those records, but honestly, we don't have very many repeat offenders, especially after a citation's issued. We just simply don't. I think, well, honestly, I can't think of a nuisance party violation that we've had repeat offenders on throughout the year. I know we've had repeat noise violations, but not repeat nuisance party.
Thank you.
As a member of city council and a longtime resident of the city of Athens, I'm very proud of administration and the police department who looks at decriminalizing a record for students, but also taking action to tone down dangerous behavior. So thank you for those, for thinking about that issue.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Moving on, the second item that we have on our agenda under City and Safety Service is the amendment, well, a lot of amending to the loud animal ordinance. This has come up before in committee. We discussed this particular ordinance, which is 9.01.05, which used to, was formerly the loud dog ordinance, but the name being changed now to animal to be more all-encompassing. The only changes in this version that, I mean, I can read through the whole thing if you want me to, but I can also sum the main changes, which are basically, if you remember or recall, before it was outside animal only. We have had citizens come forward and say, it's kind of reducing the scope in some of the problem areas, so therefore, outside has been removed. So it's, it's basically reading as any loud dog or animal, I should say, loud and frequent or habitual barking, howling, and yelping. But everything, like I said, stays the same in terms of the amendments to the ordinance, which was things such as code enforcement officers, police officers, solid waste control inspectors, and others assigned by service safety directors shall be supplied with citation tags to where they will cite the residents and leave a tag on the door of the house.
Steve, we've also talked about having some kind of pamphlet when they leave a citation, talking about what they can do to help. Because I think one thing is that some people who go off to work, who have a barking animal dog, they don't necessarily know that it's doing that, especially if it's somebody, and it's a puppy. My neighbors just, they got a puppy not too long ago, and it's like, your puppy's really barking a lot during the day, and so they left the TV on. Now the puppy's happy. So I think that education has to be part of it, because not everybody knows that if you're gone, you don't necessarily know, especially if you're not in part of the neighborhood and you don't see your neighbors, they're not gonna sit there and say, hey, your puppy's dog. And I would, I would caution about saying, defining what the noise is, because nothing is louder than a parrot. And if you've ever lived next to a parrot, they don't, they squawk, I guess. But, you know, there are, my neighbor's just got a new bird, and I could tell it was a new bird, and it makes a lot of noise, more than the puppy. And the puppy and the parrot are in the same house. I'm sure they're having a really good time. It seems that they're having a good time. So I think education is really important, so. Whether we want to adopt a brochure from an animal, you know, like from the Humane Society, or something that's put along with, if people leave a citation, they also leave a flyer.
Yeah, that's a good idea. A flyer of some kind, if we could probably get it reproduced.
Yeah.
Yeah. But the ordinance does say, any animal. So it has been changed from not just dogs, yeah, any noise.
And along with that, I was just looking through too, again, it says habitual barking, howling, yelping, or other noise. And other noise is a new item in there. So I think maybe we've covered those. But I, I do agree with you in terms of some literature or a warning or something along those lines.
Like a flyer.
A flyer, yeah. A flyer that could be posted.
I would also add that, you know, sometimes when a dog is barking, they're trying to notify somebody of a difficult situation. And maybe by calling the police, that might actually, maybe an elderly person has fallen or is unconscious, and it just may, from a safety point of view, public health, whatever point of view, it may be a way to get somebody some help that otherwise, you know, the neighbor's just thinking, oh, the dog's just barking and barking, you know? But maybe by having somebody knock on the door or hearing that, they may, it may, you know, cue something in to something else, so. I mean, our officer's time is important, and every time a dog barks, I don't think we're talking about this kind of stuff. There's been a lot of discussion around the community about, oh, my dog barks, now what, you know, what does this mean? That's not what we're talking about. These are people whose animals, and I, I value the discretion of our officers, that they're gonna be able to figure that out if that call comes in. That's what they're there for, and they have to make discretionary, you know, things happen all the time. So I just think that, I think this is good for the community in general.
I have a question.
Jeff?
Well, I see some of the department heads are here. Code enforcement officers, police officers, solid waste control inspector, and others assigned by the city service director shall be supplied with citation tags. That includes blah blah, and shall notify persons violating the section. How do you guys feel about you guys enforcing this?
We're in line. Is it here or is it there?
Whatever hot seat you want.
Well, when I say the timeframe right now is the same as the noise ordinance, so the majority of it's gonna happen at night. Chief's gonna have a bigger responsibility than we will. But the question that I ask, and we get called on this quite frequently, when we do get an animal complaint, it's typically in a duplex or a triplex, and it's from wall to wall. You will not hear it at the property line outside. I get the same calls right now on smoking within a duplex and a triplex. My neighbor's smoking, or my, and the other unit is smoking. So where does this ordinance go in that situation?
The template I have says outside. Am I wrong in that?
It's changed.
It's changed back to indoors as well?
Back to, there's no definition for indoor or outdoor, it's just in general.
Okay, so.
So if you're, you know, you're indoors, you're in the same building on a triplex, but you won't hear it at the property line. You got a person in the same building calling, saying, the dog in the other unit's barking. And I would say that's where the majority of our calls come from, when we get these kinds of calls, so.
And have you issued, have you people issued citations?
We got a phone call a couple weeks ago about, I won't say where, but a rottweiler that the property owner was letting run loose. I called the dog warden, and the dog warden paid him a visit, and I haven't heard anything since. So they are there, and they will assist us, and they have done so. So they just don't tour the town. But usually, if there's an issue, that's what we, and that's how we handle it in our office.
Okay. Thank you.
Steve? Can I roll?
Well, I wanted to make a quick comment acknowledging my gratitude towards the fact that this issue has come up and that newspapers have helped cover the issue and educate the community a little better. In a small pole of the neighborhood in which I live, people have acknowledged it's less of an issue now, or that it seems to be better. So perhaps there has been a general education through this process. I know the community ebbs and flows, and that may change. One question I guess I was curious about or hoping for clarification on is the timeframe. So the way it's written, is daytime exempt, or it still allows the police department with daytime? Maybe clarification on that, thanks.
The ordinance is drafted to mirror the noise ordinance. The noise ordinance is in effect 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
Gotcha.
Prior to the per se timeframe, which is any time listed in the ordinance indicating there's a prima facie violation, we refer that as per se timeframe. So prior to the per se timeframe, this ordinance to be effective would require a complaint for us to, so between the hours of seven in the morning to 10:00 at night, somebody would have to call in a complaint through the week to the police department in order for us to respond and actually enforce this violation, this citation, I'm sorry, this ordinance for violation. After the per se timeframe, police officers driving through the neighborhood, just like with a noise complaint or a noise violation, who can hear a dog barking or an animal barking or howling or whatever, can stop and take action. And so really, when you're talking about barking dog, it's a quality of life issue, just like noise violations are. And so we thought, you know, these two things really mesh, they should mesh. I mean, noise is noise, whether it's a loud stereo or a barking dog, the issue is peace and quiet for the, for the community. And so if we're enforcing, forcing louds- And so if we're enforcing, forcing loud stereos one way and barking dogs another, that's actually why I asked for this. And I apologize for any of the controversy that we created by asking for a change in the ordinance. Quite honestly, we're just asking for some, the police department wanted some consistency on a noise violation, quality of life violation. And then secondly, we needed an opportunity to take enforcement action. Where on these particular kind of complaints, more than 50% of the owners are not present when the violations take place, which is why the dog's outside, or kennelled, or whatever, barking in the first place. So we asked for, you know, a change to make this an administrative violation versus a minor misdemeanor, which it was or is currently, to match the noise violation, because it's a noise violation type issue, and that we would be able to cite the residence or the dwelling in absence of contacting an owner, so that for more than 60% of the complaints that we handle, we could actually take enforcement action. Citizens who call the police department, don't want to hear us explain that nobody was home, therefore we could do nothing. Under the current ordinance, that's the way it is. If nobody's home, we can do nothing. And we honestly don't employ enough police officers to go back to residence for days on end, trying to find somebody when they're home, to write them a ticket for a dog barking violation three days ago. You follow me? So we wanted the ability to hang a piece of paper on the door to say, something's taking place, and you need to take action. And I do like your idea of a pamphlet. I don't know what we'd put in that pamphlet, dog warrant, to develop something like that, but it's certainly doable. And we can carry those around the car with the citations and.
Actually, there are, I've looked up online, there are handy hints for dog owners to keep your dog from barking. And so I think that, you know, we can.
That'd be great.
We can kind of emphasize maybe some local people that can help out with dog training. And that's basically, pretty much, if your dog's barking, they're either barking over a collapsed body, which is really a good thing that this may help, or they're not very well trained, or they're being abused. So I think that having some information and such there for people.
Yeah, we see all kinds of, we see animals outside barking, the dogs specifically barking at deer, and you know, the city has plenty of deer population. Inside, they're suffering separation anxiety, they're without food with wind water, they're cold, they're hot, all those things, so. And we've had complaints on other animals as well, just it's predominantly dogs, because they seem to project the loudest. And we've all heard at 3:00 in the morning, dead quiet, except that the dog in the distance barking, so cats can't get that kind of notoriety, so.
That's a really big problem.
Yeah.
And thank you for that clarification. And I wanted to echo other sentiments as well, that it's neglected, and those concerns that you cited were the things that I think were a concern from people that were sharing frustrations and complaints with me. It was not the occasional bark, we all get that, but it's hours on end, or the neglect, and that was a concern. Thank you.
And when that, that was my point. When people are complaining to that degree, they don't want to hear the chief police explain that the ordinance doesn't provide for, to cite somebody who's not home. They want to hear the chief police say, well, we issued a citation, action is being taken. That's what they want, and that's why we've asked for this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Member Patterson, I, we did have some citizens here to talk about this ordinance, so they might still have something to say.
Sure. Is anybody in the audience tonight who wants to come forward and speak on this issue?
I spoke last time, so I just wanted to thank you for taking this in the direction that it's going, because yes, 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 please, keep doing it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does this only apply to?
Do you have to?
That's for our TV land.
Does this only apply to the dog slash noise ordinance, or can I also address kind of the nuisance ordinance as well? Because I didn't know if I could do that before. If not, no big deal. I was just, I didn't know which ordinance you guys were talking about when you opened it to the public. I was kind of waiting for it to happen with the nuisance ordinance, and just kind of questions, and you kind of moved into this. I was just curious if I could talk now, or if not, no big deal. I just thought I'd give some of my student feedback about the nuisance ordinance and how it was proposed.
That's fine, you can speak on the nuisance ordinance.
Yeah, first of all, sir, could you just give us your name and address?
Yeah, of course. Address as well?
Do we need an address?
No.
Just a name.
All right, sounds good. My name's Caleb Boliff. I'm a senior studying chemistry pharmacy here at the university. I'm also a member of J. Back, as Steve said earlier. Coming from a student's perspective, you know, I work hand in hand, I send a special committee to look at the, you know, social host and nuisance ordinance as all, and moving forward, and just coming from a student's perspective, and talking to a lot of students in different ways, everybody agrees with the ordinance as it's being proposed as right now, except for the $250 fine. I know coming and sitting here, like, that sounds great and all, but at the same time, what I found out is that $250 fine is also the maximum for a civil fine in Athens County, if I am correct. Moving forward with that, you know, $250 is a lot of money, especially when you're talking about students, myself, I mean, I'm $100,000 in debt, and pulling $250 out to pay a mistake that necessarily might not be my fault, it could be someone else's at the party, but because we know we had the party, it gets put on my shoulders. And I'm not saying that the responsibility should go out the window or anything. I'm just asking the council as a whole to take another look at this, and maybe lesser of a fine, I would suggest maybe $150. I mean, I know if someone came and I got $150 being ticket right now, I would have to go to the bank and shuffle some funds around, and try to look to some different ways in order just to pay that off. So at the same time, $150, I feel like, would still be a statement made, it would still make an indent to someone's pocket, it's still something that, you know, has that stern fine behind it, and on top of it, when looking at it, you know, it's still going to be a stern fine by the fact that the next time this happens, it's going to be a criminal offense, it's just not going to be a civil offense. So the fine itself and the ticket has backing because of the criminal offense that could happen next time coming with it. So I just ask you guys to look at the whole idea of how much the fine is actually going to be with this. Other than that, I agree completely, just from a student's perspective, and, you know, the ordinance is mostly targeting students, or would be the ones that prior, are going to be the ones that are to be targeted to the most. I just ask you, look at that amount, and kind of just see, you know, clear yourselves in our shoes, where we're coming from, with how much money this really is, because $250 is a lot of money. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments on that?
Hi, I'm Jack, another student here, a second-year graduate student, I'm undergrad here, I've been in town for about five and a half years now. I came specifically to mirror those concerns. I don't know, I don't have a deep familiarity with the city's ordinances, the county's ordinances, it's a county matter. But I know that 200, I have been at parties, for that matter, with friends for whom $250 would have been devastating, frankly. It would not have prevented them from having another party so much as it would have negatively impacted their ability to buy groceries. $250 for some students is just, it's a tremendous amount of money. I don't think that it would necessarily come to that for any of these people, because the way that the, the way that APD handles these parties currently is, frankly, like, very agreeable and very fair from a student perspective. But I would like to support the proposition for a $150 fine instead. Frankly, I think that that would be much more bearable on a student budget.
Can I just ask a question? Because I listened to the other gentleman, and thank you for bringing your piece forward. But, I mean, an average bottle of vodka is how much?
An average bottle of vodka?
Or a, okay.
We're talking about a 1.5-liter bottle of vodka.
I don't know, yeah.
Fifteen bucks, maybe 20.
And I'm going to, I'm going to say there's going to maybe be 20. If you're having a nuisance party, it's probably more than five people.
Actually, yes, it's more than five people, but actually, under the current, in the current wording, this is any collection of more than four people, and there is a fairly long list of criteria that are easily met. I mean, this is, it gets clearly written for intentionality, rather than like letter of the law.
But you also mentioned that you feel like the police are fairly appropriate in the way that they handle this out, and they seem to be pretty fair. So, you know, I don't know, maybe I'm an old adult here, but I'm thinking like, pass the hat. If somebody's getting a $250 fine, and you've had the money, you know, maybe everybody puts in $10, you know?
Well, they didn't, there's no, there's no implication that if you're having any of these parties, you've supplied anything. You could have simply invited a few friends over, and things have gotten out of hand.
Okay.
I mean, this is not, a party, like, as it is defined by the, you know, by the city, does not represent any, any real initiative beyond inviting maybe two or three people over to your house.
However.
Or expenditure.
Well, however, if you are cited for a nuisance party, it's beyond two or three people invited over to your house. And there is opportunity, and I know that Chief Pyle has talked about this repeatedly, if you have a party that's getting out of hand, call the police so we can clear it out. And if, you know, this is the responsibility, you live in a house, and you look up suddenly, and you go, whoa, where are all these people from? I'm, you know, I'm not comfortable with this, there's too much stuff going on, people on the roof, then it's a responsibility. You have signed a contract with a person, you are paying money, you're renting, it's, you know, responsibility, it's not, so you need, and I think that having a fairly substantial fine, whether it's 150 or 250, is emphasizing that. You know, you ever, if you open up your house to having big mega-parties, then you need to take the responsibility that those big parties may be busted. However, if you have two or three people over, I doubt it's going to be a nuisance party.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So I, it's.
That was just a comment directed at the initiative of the homeowners. And as I said, I agree with you, I just believe that it should be reduced to a rather more manageable sum for some students.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak out on the nuisance party or on the Loud Animal Ordinance?
I don't have anything under Ms. Lynn's. Okay, we're going to move on to Planning and Development Committee. Member Paul is the chair.
Oh, boy, now we get to talk about sewers. So sexy. As opposed to Loud Animals and Parties. So, Andy, could you take the stage?
We'll switch out here.
We'll switch out here. A hot seat.
You don't have to sit there, John, if you don't.
I think that we need.
I'm up.
It needs to be read, right? A hot seat. Okay. Several months ago, probably more than several.
Several, about a year.
Yeah, about a year ago. We remember, well, it was more than a year ago, almost two years. We remember that in our old configuration, one of the, a couple of the commissioners came by and asked about doing a sewer agreement with the city for the Radford Road area, to take sewer, the sewer from Radford Road area and the 50 corridor area, and put it through the sewer of Athens. And if you remember, I probably was the most cynical of the people.
How about critical?
And cynical. I remember I grilled Larry Sage fairly heavily, and he did a great job, you know, being able to take that. Well, however, now that we've gone through the process, we now have a contract that we would like to put before the city, the city council, for a sewer agreement with the county for this particular area. And I think that probably one of the things that says about the contract, the agreement, is that if the person who is probably the most critical about the whole thing feels that they can bring it forward in a committee meeting, that we have gone through a lot of process, and I must say that it was at times very difficult with the county, and very serious, and we had to go through a lot of getting to yes on this agreement. And I feel that it's a good agreement for everybody. To give some background, the major concern about providing sewer is because of environmental concerns. We know Margaret Creek has a lot of concerns about E. coli and other influence that come from, quite frankly, septic systems that are probably failing in that area. EPA is also probably going to, at one point, increase their requirements for the area, and so the county's looking at needing to do this. We don't want failing septic systems, many of these houses probably have no area to redo a septic system, meaning enough property to do a leach field and such that are now address the regulations that the Health Department and the EPA both have. So when we get, and Andy has some information about it, basically, we're looking at providing sewer service with a snapshot of what is out there right now. This was not an economic development agreement, it's not providing a bunch of sewer so that they can go and develop a lot more Wal-Mart's or any of these sort of things. It's dealing with what is on the ground right, right now, with, you know, given that the information that we have, and the maps, and those are the different exhibits, the map exhibits that are with the agreement that I sent out. And that includes, I think, really importantly, the land use mix. So one of our concerns for the city was tax pay, you know, businesses and such moving out of the city. So this makes a snapshot of the different land use, and the majority of the land use is for residential, which is what is there now. The county in this agreement is responsible for the infrastructure. The city is not building this individual sewer pipes. We are responsible, as Andy will discuss in a minute, of various big infrastructure, when it gets to the city's lines, the pump stations and such. The county will also be responsible for billing, dealing with people who aren't paying their bills, and all that sort of administrative sort of things. The city does not have responsibility for that. And I think that, and this county will also have to deal with selling it to the county people. We don't, we're providing a service, it's a service contract in my, in my terms. And I think that, you know, through this difficult, sometimes very difficult discussions that we have at the county, that Andy and Paula and Paul Loeb were all, they just did so much homework, and did such a great job of representing the city and the interests of the city ratepayers that I really want to thank them. So I want to open up to Andy and Mr. Stone.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
I don't know. Do we have a picture of the bathroom?
Probably not.
Okay.
And to thank the council for allowing me to be part of this, this negotiation process, because effectively, that's what it was here over the last year, year and a half, was a pretty, pretty strong negotiation process. You know, as you talk about government work, this was the right way to go about things. A little history, a little background. The original feasibility study for a sewer expansion, and ultimately the county constructing a sewer system southwest of the city of Athens was in 1998. And there's been efforts in fits and starts since then to try to figure out how to do that. At the end of the day, cost was what stopped it in all cases. If you're going to build a waste water treatment plant and a sewer system, that's an extremely expensive proposition, and you have to recover those costs through sewer bills to the people who will use the system. If you don't have a high enough density of people in an area, and customers in an area to where they can affordably pay those sewer bills, I mean, you could charge a very high amount, but that's just not a reasonable thing, then you simply can't build it. And so in recent years, the county has come to the realization that they're not going to be able to build both the sewer system and the treatment plant. And there's this large city just to the northeast of the area of concern that has the. this large city just to the northeast of the area of concern that has a large treatment plant. Beyond that, the Ohio EPA has pushed significantly for communities to figure out how to combine services. And so the likelihood of even if they could find the money to build a new treatment plant, that treatment plant getting permitted to be allowed to discharge to a waterway, because ultimately that's what every wastewater treatment plant does, is discharge to, to a waterway, that close to another large treatment plant is unlikely. So, that said, as the receiver of the waters that flow down from Margaret's Creek watershed and come into western Athens and then flow into the Hocking River and through the city of Athens, we thought it was in our interest with surface water quality to entertain this idea. So, over the last year and a half, we have been negotiating with the county about what the intergovernmental agreement will look like, and, and, and how we would treat the county sewage. It's important to note, this is not a city sewer system to the southwest. It's a county sewer system, as Councilmember Fall mentioned. This is just a service that we would provide. We would take the sewage that comes in and we would treat it. There were some significant concerns from, from the city's end as the ultimate, the, the ones who have to treat the sewage. Number one was quantity. So there is a quantity limit of 600,000 gallons per day with a peak flow of 2.1 million gallons per day. But that's a peak flow, like when there's a significant flow. The 600,000 is the average, average flow. It's not to exceed that. For 1,500 equivalent single-family homes, an equivalent single-family home is considered 400 gallons per, per day for a, for a parcel. There are different structures have much higher equivalent single-family home values than others. For instance, a, a mobile home has a lower equivalent single-family home, and apartment building has a, has a higher equivalent single-family home. So it's, we're converting all of that with the daily estimated flow to ESFUs, which is 400 gallons per day. So those are the limits, 2.1 million, 600,000 gallons, the 1,500 equivalent single-family homes that we are taking from the county. We recognized that it was a bridge too far with the two groups to allow a, a great deal more capacity than that because of the issues surrounding land uses and potential uses and, and the city's concerns about business flight. And so, by putting that limit in at the front end, we recognized that any future agreement for future growth of this system would be subject to a different agreement. And, and you'll see that in several portions through the agreement where it says, anything beyond this is subject to a future agreement. And that was a way we could just take that off the table, not have to talk about it. We looked at what we, we had. Historically, the, the barrier, if you will, to providing sewer service to a subdivision outside of, or to an area outside of the city was, or at least the school of thought was, if you want those services, you should annex. Bottom line, if you, if you want sewer, you should annex. So otherwise, it's your problem, you deal with it. I would contend, and, and we looked at this very carefully as a group, that it, it may not be in the city's interest to annex that far out for two reasons. Number one, the majority of the parcels are residential, and the city lives and dies by income tax, right? Not by, by property taxes. Property taxes go to other places. So, so residential properties don't bring income tax to the city, yet you'd have to extend services. And if the police chief were here, if he were to say he had to go to runs out to Heversville Road because we would annex that area just so they could have sewer service, he would say, boy, you know, can you buy me another 10 police officers so I can do that?
Plus a 20.
Perhaps 20, and that would cost a lot of money. So, so that's one argument as to why providing the sewer service without annexation may make sense. Number two, it's the environmental issue. A lot of the subdivisions that occurred out here, and sometimes we refer to people saying the six subdivisions, and that's the number of subdivisions that occurred and were built prior to the, to the modern septic regulations that, that the county health department enforces. So you have a lot of both single-family home subdivisions as well as trailer parks and other land uses out there that have systems that, that today just would never, never be allowed to be built, and, and they're failing. And the ability for the health department to, you know, unless it becomes a significant nuisance, the ability for them to enforce someone in a, you know, to replace the septic system at a, at a trailer just isn't there in Ohio law. So, the result is effluent that comes out of failing septic systems and goes to creeks that subsequently goes into Margaret's Creek, that goes into the Hocking River and runs through the city of Athens. We provide water to the, what we call the ball addition, which is just to the southwest of the city. And that's an area that the city does extend water service to. My water foreman has talked about instances where he's opened a water meter pit and it's been full of sewage. So, that is a situation that just, from a public health perspective, just is really untenable. I think we, you know, the big concern about business flight, if you build a septic system, or correction, you build a sewer system, and businesses will choose, rather than locating in the city of Athens, it will instead go and locate out there and therefore we will lose the income tax. I think we addressed that pretty well. That was probably our strongest concern that we put forth to the, to the, to the other side of the table with the county. And the way that we, we tackle that is by putting limits on the type of land use. Not that we would limit the land use, but limit the type of customers from that particular type of land. And, and that's in here. And you'll see that in a couple of the different sections.
Section 4.
Yeah, section 4, page 4. And if you got further questions, we can talk about that. Go ahead.
I just thought that, that's a good stopping point for a quick question, because I think that we did not just come up with this in Athens City and Athens County, that that is a growth issue. I'm sure our planner talked at length about that and what happens in municipalities and counties when this, it's not like we made that up. That is something that has been studied and looked at, and there's some best practices out there around tax base and all these things you just mentioned. So I think that's an important point to me.
It's a very important point. And, and the planner, as Paulson said this, I think he's quoted, a former county planner, Bob Lichtenberg, maybe he's quoted somebody else, in saying that people like rats follow sewer. And so, if you build sewer, the likelihood of a densification of land use will, will occur. So the important thing with this agreement is this agreement is addressing an existing condition to be able to solve an existing environmental problem, as opposed to creating an agreement to govern, you know, what we maybe don't want to have, have occur in that area. There are.
Let me make a comment on that. I know the intent is environmental, but I think we can't hide the fact that it will probably, how some economic growth up that way.
I would agree that, that there will be some economic growth. The existing conditions are such that there are about 1,350 equivalent single-family homes in the area, if you look at your attachment A or to the, to the A of the agreement in the blue area. So there's, there's a little bit of space, basically, to increase the land use there. Now, 150 equivalent single-family homes can get used up pretty quickly. You know, one major apartment building could, could use, could use, you know, almost all of them.
Right.
That, that's not necessarily what's going to go out there. So there's a little space, and then the potential for more in the future.
Right.
Certainly there, and, and that's, and the, the pink area is an area that we saw attributable to potential future growth, but again, that would be subject to a different agreement. One of the things we talked about early on in these agreements was a, a JED or a SEDA, which are provisions in the Ohio revised code for a joint economic development district. I forget what SEDA stands for.
Commercial.
Yeah, economic development dis- area, which are, which are provisions that allow for some coordination of efforts across jurisdictional lines, city, county, township, to support economic growth in an area and evenly split the benefits and the services. So, this development doesn't prohibit any future development of one of those, one of those zones, as a mechanism to, to, like I said, split both the benefit and the cost of some economic growth.
I, I think that it needs to be recognized that we couldn't say to the county, you can only have 1,200 equivalent S, SFS, is what I was calling them. Because the mapping ability and our ability to count every single potential sewer connection is limited. So there had to be a range. But the range allows for a certain number increases. However, it's limited by percentage of land use between commercial, industrial, and residential. So those are set in, in the agreement, and it's limited by a geography, which you see on your map. And so those are the limits as a city that we, we insisted upon, which we did insist, this was a huge sticking point, and it took a lot of, of negotiation to get to this, allowing for the fact that we don't know, no, nobody knows the trailer parks out there, whether they have a major sewer, you know, whether they're going all into a big giant septic system, or they're going into a bunch of tiny septic systems, or they're just kind of going into the ground. So that is why it's not a definite number, and, you know, it's a higher number than what we and the city and the county has estimated, because there's kind of an unknown.
I would like to point out that the concerns, of course, had to do with the fact that outside the city, there are no codes, zoning codes, so therefore anything can be built out there. That's why we went to a cap on it, as well as percentage of what can be a, there is, if you look at the D maps for these areas there, it's agricultural, residential, commercial. I think there's one industrial. So we wanted to put a cap on that. And, and this is what we'll have to be, you know, if, if they go to that 1,500, and we have the capacity to do that, we'll have to renegotiate. And the future councils and the future administrations will have to be looking for that and say, okay, what are the conditions? If you look historically, residential zones do not pay for themselves. If you look at the population out there, I suspect most of them work in the city and already pay income tax. The footprint we're looking at at that map would require, if we, and we're not talking about annexation, because I'm, I'm sure somebody stopped as soon as Andy said annexation and stopped listing at that point and panicked out there. Annexation would require an increase of fire stations, you know? Again, when you, when you annex a place, you're, you're providing water, which is already Lee Axe, which we'd be in a food fight with Lee Axe. We provide, you know, police, which we, means, and the services out there with the sheriff's department. And, and how many police would it take to, to control this area? We would try to provide fire, so we'd have to, you know, triple our fire department easily.
We definitely increase codes.
And code, yes. I, I, sorry, I didn't mention you.
There's some barking dogs out there somewhere.
I'm sure there's some.
And, and name horses. Also, I think, I think one of the things about industrial and, and commercial uses is that there is a, a, there is in Ohio revised code and Athens City Code, ability to look at wa- water quality. And if, you know, my, my concern was, you know, the, the horrible thing of having a, like a goo, an abitbar out there, you know, and then they're just dumping a huge amount of nasty chemicals or some kind of fracking something out there, recycling or metal recycling.
You see that in section 2.2, 2.1.
Right. So there's a way of looking at water quality and the certain protections for our sewer system in the Ohio revised code and the Athens City Code. So, we already do that. When you have somebody who comes and says that we want to dump us, like one of those septic sucking services from Red Green, you already look at the water quality of those. So, that is put in the agreement that's, you know, further protection for the city.
One other point I would make, this map I'm sure will be in the press tomorrow, and somebody who lives in this pink session, or the women, yeah, pink session may say, well, why aren't I on there? Where, why?
Because most of the.
So I think this is important to explain, the blue and what that is the initial phase. So.
Sure, I can, I can speak a little bit to that.
Yeah, yeah.
So the, the blue area is the area that is identified as the most problematic right now, and the area that truly has the need. In fact, I think this goes all the way back to the 1998 study, and I would, I would refer to the county and their consultant specifically on why what area was chosen versus what areas that were not chosen. It was important to the city to identify pretty much the built-up areas in the initial service area, the areas that are already putting out sewage, already polluting, which you would, the waterways that they had failing systems, as opposed to areas that currently didn't have any, any sewage systems, or perhaps were kind of outside the initial scope of the project, and, and separate those, so that we could truly say, hey, this area here may be appropriate for our future agreement, and not now. I would direct any further inquiries as opposed to why I'm in versus why I'm not into the county, because ultimately, that boundary was drawn by.
Thank you. Congratulations.
There's one other point I can make, and I'll quit talking. The, there, there is another benefit to, to the city beyond, beyond the environmental one, which is of course the largest benefit, and that's monetary. You know, I have a terribly aged sewer system to take care of, and I'm just getting ready to incur, we collectively are getting ready to incur another 16 to 17 million dollars in debt for the plant rehabilitation. Now, you know, whether or not the county hooks in, we needed to do that plant rehabilitation anyway. That's important to remember. And we were expecting to be, have to pay for that over the next 20 years. However, boy, it will be nice to have the capacity fees that come along with this large new customer, as well as the, the sewer payments monthly, in order to help us, number one, service that debt, and number two, to continue to maintain our existing infrastructure around the city that, that is aged and fails every day. So, this will be useful.
Could you address the issue that this is not going to take up, I don't want to take somebody into the city that's going to take up a huge amount of our capacity so we can't develop in the city.
Sure. So we looked at, when we did the wastewater treatment plant rehab project, we looked at future growth. We looked at both all the undeveloped land in the city. There's some on East State Street. University of State's obviously the only major section in the city that's undeveloped, some of the southwest city, and said, what happens if this is built out completely, and we take on an outside the city customer, whether that be a southwest area, whether that be a northwest area, you know, who knows what direction. And we incorporated that into the planning for our new plant. So, we would not have been able to secure the Water Push Control Loan Fund alone had we not made a reasonable assessment or a reasonable forecast for future growth. So, our, our, our new plant will go from a 4.8 million gallon a day plant permit right now to a 7.2, and, you know, we'll be able to push peak flow, almost 20 million gallons a day, you know, where right now I can, I can, it's everything I can do to get 8 million gallons a day peak flow. So that's, that's on the plant's side. Now, that said, this project, or this, this agreement is for 600,000 gallons a day. On a typical day in Athens, I treat 2 million gallons of sewage. They will never, I don't want to say they'll never, but a new system like this most likely will, will have less than 200,000 gallons a day, you know, normal usage. And because they're billed by the gallon of sewage, whereas in most cases, you're billing sewer rates based on water usage, but we're actually billing the county by the gallon of sewage, it's in their interest to keep stormwater and non-sewage out of the system, to keep those flows lower. So, I'm thinking that at, at max use, really, we're going to see about 200,000 gallons a day, and I'm treating about 2 million right now. So, it's about a one-tenth of our capacity, and there's plenty, plenty more capacity.
And it's important, because we, we deal with a lot of, in, you know, the, the I and I into the system, the, from stormwater and such that impacts. But this will be a nice new tight system, which I think is important. That's a, a good thing. Steve?
I appreciate hearing about the influence. That's something that I've always been concerned about, is what's coming in. But I'm equally concerned about what's going out. And more importantly, it's the sludge. Can you give me some ideas to what the estimate is for the increase in our sludge that'll be going to Cannonville Fields or wherever?
Um, we currently have 80 acres east of the city that is owned by the city of Athens that we use for spreading our sludge on, on any given year. We have a very good contract with the sludge hauler, whose job it is ultimately to truck our, our sludge to the east. We, we don't de-water our sludge in Athens. We used to de-water our sludge in Athens quite a bit, and that, that was an administratively extremely difficult process. And you kind of do your, your math on trucking distance for the sludge versus how much water you need to take out of the sludge. And since we have such a close proximity sludge-spreading location. And since we have such a close proximity sludge spreading location, it doesn't make sense for us to do a bunch of effort of de-watering. And while the sludge will increase probably at the same volume that our current, that the sewage will increase, probably about 10%, the new plant, the efficiency of siphoning off of the sludge, both the primary and secondary clarifiers compared to the current efficiency, will be much higher. So our sludge actually will be at a higher concentration of solids once the plant rehab project is done. So we actually may end up seeing less sludge in volume because the ability to decant basically what we're pulling off those clarifiers is going to go up. So even though we'll have this increase in sewage volume, we may have a decrease in the sludge.
Interesting. So we may not see any added cost in the hauling?
In sludge hauling or in spreading. So, go ahead.
Is the city going to have to shell out any money to upgrade bigger pipes, pumps, lift stations, so on, to bring all this in and down to the treatment plant?
Sure, that's a good question. And section, I'll find it here, talking about the capacity, 2.21, oh, 2.2.2. Talks about the capacity fee that's going to take place during the design and development of this. And so ultimately, it's $3,000 per equivalent single family home. So if you do the math all the way out, and it'll be whatever the actual equivalent single family homes are when they, you know, when they go through design, it'll be a pretty sizable amount of money that the USDA loan that the county gets to do this project, it's an applicable cost in that loan that they will pay to the city at the front end. And that money will be used to upgrade those sections of pipe that we need to, or those lift stations that we need to in order to accept this.
Well, which will also be a benefit for some of the issues that we have in those areas right now.
Correct. For instance, one of the approaches that we've identified is the Dairy Lane approach. The Dairy Lane sewer is significantly undersized. It was put in well before that area the city was annexed, I'm assuming to service the asylum and its activities when it was there. It's old, it's small, we have problems with it. This would bring sewage in that direction and require a larger sewer, so we would build a larger sewer in that area as part of the capacity fees that are paid at the front end of this project.
And the meeting, if you look at your maps, A, B, and C, so you have locations, possible locations, you know, the engineer will bear that out. They hope that some of the capacity fee would also cover some of the I and I that you spoke of, maintenance of our side of the system.
Which is an important thing for the capacity of the whole system.
But we won't have to tear up Richland Avenue again.
It's funny that you mention that. The, I intentionally identified, you look at points A, B, and C, and this agreement keeps talking about points A, B, and C. And by and large, you know, one of them is, I'll try to remember which is which here. Yeah, so connection A is out Union Street, near the city limits, out of Union Street, where it makes the most sense there. Connection B is on Dairy Lane. Connection C actually, rather than go down Richland Avenue from the south Y and come all the way in Richland Avenue, which is already a sewer that at some times has that capacity with I and I, will instead have that, go out Blackburn and go through some of the undeveloped areas, perhaps some of the ridges areas that are owned by the university, and then come in at the top of the Summit Coast Run apartment complex. There's a public sewer that's pretty large there that where it enters the main on Richland is north of the last crossing of Coast Run, so it's a lot larger section there. And so we knew we were getting ready to do this, you had me a project on Richland, and didn't want to tear it up after the fact. So this is, there was some thought going into that location.
I'm relieved.
Part of the reason why you have Public Works Director rather than one, one and one street, a sewer street. So he can talk to himself.
I do a lot of talking to myself, I have that.
Chris, do you have anything to add?
I just want to thank city administration, just watching everybody work together with county representatives. I think, you know, Andy's bigger picture kind of thing, what this is going to bring to us is, you know, better, a cleaner ribbon for the city. And so that, this is an important part of the process. So for bringing the sewer agreement, the final draft of it, to all the other city council members, and just want to thank you again, Andy, for all the work.
I'd like to thank Commissioner Mae Lysen, who did a lot of this work on this.
We sat there. The sole representative of the county with all of us.
Thank you, Lenny.
A brave soul sometimes, so, yeah. I think that I'm, you know, being the person who probably gave the county the most trouble through this whole process, I think that the process went well and the negotiations went well. And I feel confident that it answers the most important questions in my mind, which was, you know, tax pay, development, and, you know, kind of the whole idea of sprawl and we're not going to annex. And so I'm happy to bring it forward. I think that says something about the process.
I know you can't want to say something.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo everyone else's sentiments as well, and obviously devils in details, and you're receiving those details. And again, to applaud Public Works Director Andy Stone on his hard work in considering this. And what impressed me again from the very start in speaking with Mr. Stone is his interest in the health and safety, welfare, and environmental issues that this will impact. So again, I applaud his efforts and his views on that. Thank you.
I would also like to have the ministry reflect, if there is the part two, the expansion of this particular activity or contract, that the council and administration, future administration, because I don't know how long it will take to do this, looks at JEDs and SEDs in the Ohio revised code, and with an idea of that being the next round of negotiations. Okay?
I also just want to thank Andy Stone for all the work that you've put in this. For those of you who remember, there were initially, when the SCAL came forward, there was kind of a plan A, B, and C. And so there was a lot of, clearly a lot of negotiating to go through because there were some other options of varying amounts of cost associated with them. So this is, I'm happy to see this finally come all the way through.
It's important to note, this is not our project. This is a county project. Certainly, there's a lot to do going forward for the county, and, you know, we stand ready to be a partner in that as they go forward with that. And I think that the steps we've taken thus far will get us to there. Of note, City Columbus Treats 22 communities around City Columbus. And I recognize we're not the same as Columbus, and that's a totally different animal out there, but it's not unheard of for a large city in an area to be the treating entity, whereas other communities on the periphery end up colliding.
So people may be wondering about the process is, the process, we need to, as a city, accept the agreement that's been written to allow for the Service Safety Director to sign the agreement. And then it's the county's fault. And they get to, they are responsible for the application for the loans and dealing with the EPA and dealing with the citizens out in the area and selling their own project. And once, you know, basically, once we have said, yes, this is a second agreement, we are willing to sign off on it, we're good to go. You know, it's their ba... It's their baby. So...
Similar situation, and had to replace a septic tank that was essentially made of cinder blocks before we moved into the city. So I never thought I would be talking this much about sewage, or listening to this much about sewage, but it's important, and it's important to our public health and safety. And so I'm really glad to see this happening, and thank you all for your work on the project.
So I will bring this up at the next meeting for the first reading. Let me know any other issues or comments from Andy Stone or Paula. So, thank you. Thank you, Andy. Soon, soon as possible. Okay. Oh, we can go on to the next exciting extravaganza of rubbish. There's several things that we need to discuss tonight that have, has been in the realm of discussion for several, for many months. Part of it, I will deal with the most, the easiest thing to talk about tonight. And then I'm going to put it over to Steve because part of the stuff, discussion was under City and Safety Service Committee, which is, I'm trying to twist it up this night. Okay, the first part, I would just like to put forward that part of the Athens city code needs to be changed. Nope. Okay. This has been put forward by the code enforcement that a change needs to be put into section 502.11, uncollected rubbish and refuse a nuisance. It talks about a different section. The person responsible for either or both types of nuisance shall be subject to a fine in accordance with Athens city code section. It says 21, 29.13.01D, and it needs to be changed for bookkeeping purposes to 29.12.02. So this will make it easier to look at basically dumpsters and start cleaning the dumpsters up.
No, what that is, the citation section of the code is actually, it's in the wrong. So it has to cite back to 2912.02.
Right.
It was a typo or a change.
A change, yes.
That we explained two years ago that didn't get caught in one section. So just a matter of making a couple of sections of the code coincide with each other.
Right. So it references the right section of code, so you can do the right type of enforcement.
Got a lot to do with seven day accumulation.
No, not on this one. Okay. And so that, that's a simply, that's simple, that's my part. Okay. The other parts, I'm going to pass it over to Steve because he's been kind of spearheading the discussion, and it basically has to do with nuisance, refuse, nuisance, preparation, storage, and penalties. And we changed some of the penalties and such, so.
Thank you.
Take it on, Steve.
From sewage to trash.
Right.
There's several sections of code that we're going to be bringing forward, and I'll start with essentially looking at section 29.12, which is a portion of the code which kind of talks about the sanitary requirements, as well as citations. There's a couple citation changes that are in the ordinances that are moving forward. But anyway, sticking with 29.12.01, sanitary requirements, there's some language change which would bring, I think, more clarity to what is being described. It currently would read as, "All exterior property areas and premises shall be maintained in a clean, safe, and sanitary condition, free of any accumulation of rubbish or garbage," is currently how it reads. What would be added to that would be including broken trash bags, loose garbage, overflowing containers, or an accumulation of excessive waste in a trash storage area. Under 29.12.02, which is the citation section, and again, the mayor brought forward or had sent information about the last time any citation changes had taken place within this section of code, I believe it was 2008. When that occurred, we had a lot of conversation the last time this came forward, when we did discuss it in committee, which was basically that, you know, a $20 fine is no different than a parking meter violation, and therefore, a lot of people just would find that kind of in one ear and out the other. Pay it and, you know, just keep giving me $20 fines. So the change would be from $20 on the first offense to 50. A second offense would be $75. A third offense would be $100, and the fourth offense would be $120, $25, excuse me? And the fifth offense would be $150. That's going up from 60, 80, and 100. So it's increasing. I mean, as people have gone around, I know that I've heard a lot from the, some, from the ad hoc committee, ad hoc committee which put forward report back in April of 2014. They made a lot of recommendations to make changes such as this, as well, the WCA, the Westside Community Association's Beautification Committee also made strong suggestions for these changes as well. Any comments on 29 title or section?
I want to point out that these are not necessarily per day, but if somebody doesn't clean up their trash and then people complain about it the next day, then it... So theoretically, if you don't clean your trash up between garbage day on Thursday to garbage day on Thursday, you can accumulate a number of citations. So it can be a very expensive proposition if you ignore the first one. So, yeah. Part of it is sad that we have to fine people for cleaning up after themselves, like the mom and me saying that. But, you know, it's important for the health reasons especially, I think, that the more garbage, I've been seeing more, you know, garbage around, and that's definitely going to attract more nuisance animals, rats, and, you know, all those sort of things, and what feeds on rats or things, coyotes and stuff like that, wild dogs. So, yeah, we need to keep our nest, nest clean. So I think increasing the fines is a good first step.
Thank you. I appreciate the hard work from our community that put time into looking into this. I wholeheartedly support the increase in fines. I think that's necessary. Likewise, there is a need for accountability. I know that we live in a community with a lot of transitory, people are coming and going, we have students, we, 90, was 70, 80% of our...
74.
74% of our housing stock is rental, so I understand that there is challenges here, and we're constantly educating a new population of citizens in our community. I do want to hear from the code department as well, and acknowledge that this has their support or blessing too. Obviously, they're challenged with the task of enforcing this, but I support the increase in the fee for sure. It doesn't seem like that long ago, but 17 years ago, my wife and I got married, and the people that came into town for our wedding in Athens acknowledged how beautiful this town is. They hadn't been here in a long time, acknowledged just how lucky we are to live here. And I've also heard other people coming into town for confirmations or being at the Catholic Church on Mill Street and seeing how horrific the area looks around it after just parties and trash. So we're sort of a Dr. Jekyll, Mr. Hyde sometime in this community, and accountability is necessary.
I would just add that you mentioned the code committee that responded with the report in April with many recommendations. Councilmember Ryson and I sat on that along with our code director, John, and I'm sure John will speak to this as well. But that was about a nine-month process of meeting with many people and going through recommendations and trying to figure that out. And this, we've done some, we're moving forward with this. We also have another one coming up later, which I will speak to directly. But I just wanted to acknowledge that John was very much a part of that process.
Other questions or comments on this particular ordinance?
Well, this one also specifically talks about the putting garbage cans out of you.
Well, that's that one. We're not getting to that yet.
That? No, that's second ordinance.
Second ordinance.
Which, if everyone's willing, I'm ready to go on with the second one.
If it's not sewer, I don't, I...
I think I'd like to hear Mr. Paskey's comment about the increase of fines.
Well, the $20 ticket, I don't think really did a lot of impact through the years. Kids kind of just brushed that off, or tenants, or whomever. It seemed to start taking attention at $60, when I think it started catching their attention. So this is probably okay. And I don't know, I just, I know councilperson Steve Patterson worked on it quite a bit, and, you know, I don't know how you come up with the numbers, but I think it will be okay. But I would like to say that I think right now, we are probably the most aggressive, if that's the word to use, and forceful that we have ever been on the trash of what we're doing, or the litter control officer that we have now is doing a fine job. And we're being, we're being pretty hard. So I, we're all ready into the second. So I, we're already into the second week of, third week of this school year, and I can't tell you the numbers that have already exceeded $100 for this year. So I, we may get a little bit of kickback on the top number when this is all said and done, because of how many we are issuing throughout the course of this year. Where we've taken a different stance that we've really never taken before, so.
Well, hopefully, no one would ever get to that top number.
Well, they are, they are. I mean, as the police chief explained earlier, inhibitions with alcohol, things happen. But, you know, I just, for example, in 2008, we did a total of 745 trash violations throughout the city. Last year, with the litter control officer not even there but half the time, we did almost 3,200. And we will exceed that number by far this year. So, I mean, we're getting, and I think you're starting to see some things coming to compliance. Palmer Street on a daily basis seems to be pretty good compared to years past. So just throwing that out.
One of the things that's important in looking at this, though, is you kind of said it, that you're already up to $100 fines for a number of individuals. This essentially just kind of ramps it up to that $100 a lot faster in terms of the fine, and hopefully, educating and behaviorally changing things, because there's two more steps along that path, where it goes up to 125 and then up to 150.
I agree, I agree with you. Just, I don't know if it registers with some folks, so that's all.
Well, I don't see any community members in here to protest the increase in fines for trash as people did for the nuisance parties, so maybe that's not an issue as much, of as much concern.
No further comments? All right, moving on to what will be the second ordinance, which is dealing with Title V, Public Utilities. And under, to start with, it's looking at Section 5.02.03, which is Preparation and Storage. Currently, the language reads, and I'll paraphrase, that all solid waste shall be kept in containers, stored out of view from the street behind the front edge of the house, except when containers are at the curbside for pickup. The ordinance change would be, again, it's changing a section in here, so I'll read it now in its entirety, at least for that section. "No household or commercial operation shall permit to accumulate upon the premises any solid waste, except in containers provided by the householder, comma, Athens City pursuant to Section 5.05.05, or commercial operator. All solid waste and receptacles as defined in Section 5.05.01 shall be kept in containers stored out of view, except when the containers are at the curbside for pickup." The second amendments to this particular ordinance are very similar to the first ordinance that I just described, where it is the fee structure. The fee structure, again, would be the same for violations under this section, to where it would start at $50, as opposed to $20 for the first offense. Same thing. It would increase to $75 on the second, $100 on the third, $125 on the fourth, and $150 on the fifth offense.
So Steve, we have a little slideshow just to remind people what we're discussing, and maybe a couple slides of what, some improvements we'd like to see that the gentleman can bring up.
Okay.
So they can go kind of rapidly here, because you'll get a pretty good idea of what we're talking about. Next, yeah. So you just, everybody's seen this in town, everybody knows what in front of the house looks like. So this is what we're kind of talking about. And now, stop there. That one actually is a screen with a bush that hides trash. It's a sloped area, and the owner of the property has hidden it from the street view. So that's an option that somebody might consider, okay? Here's another option, you've seen some of these around town. I believe the back of that property goes straight down a hill, and there's no place out of view anyways to put, so that, I'm just saying that's an option. Is that it? Okay, he must have been showing those, I didn't see them. So anyways, that gives people an idea of what we're talking about. I actually took those pictures, and I drove into other sections of town, and if I saw something, I took a picture of it. Whether it showed there or I saw it, I don't know. So there are a few residents who might want to consider where their placement is that live in R1 residential areas, that may want to just kind of look at that. This has been a controversial issue in terms of enforcement, and we needed to look at the language here. I know this also came out of the code committee, we discussed this at length. And as far as I'm concerned, I traverse through an area day in and day out, where I have to view trash in mounds, whatever. There were some pictures of that, and it's a livability and a quality of life issue. So I certainly want to, the code, the wording of this ordinance is very important for me on a day-to-day basis in terms of my quality of life, my neighbor's quality of life, and health and safety in the community. I've seen raccoons, I've seen vermin in and out of situations. Maybe not seeing it will help. I'm not saying that that won't control it, you know, putting up a shield or helping that household figure out how to keep the trash from sight. But I think as a quality of life issue on a day-to-day basis, it's very important.
I just, I just want to say, I think member Pappy just said something about, she inserted R1 zone in there.
I did.
And we're talking about
All over town.
All zones.
I'd like to emphasize that this is a health and safety aspect. I think that having your garbage under control means that it's under control, it's in a garbage can. That reduces the amount of raccoons, rats, various other vermin that get into it. And I look at this kind of as a, you know, kind of the broken window, where if you start cleaning up things, then people are going to say, oh, this area looks, this looks nice. Oh, and I could, I could do this and make it even nicer. Maybe instead of just having a white picket fence, I can put a plant in front of it and make it that much nicer, and get people to think about, because this not only affects health and safety, this affects everybody's land values. Their values of their property in an area that has garbage and that looks slummy is decreased. So everybody who has property and owns property has a stake in this. And, you know, it's not fair that somebody who doesn't take care of their garbage
Or live in the house.
You know, or live in the house, you know, kind of pawns off that responsibility, and then everybody pays for it. Now, my one concern is the enforcement of this, and how it would be enforced, and whether it's through the permit inspections, making sure that they have it, and I'd like to hear Mr. Paskey's.
Oh, you will.
I would just add that by the cleaning, in my opinion, cleaning up of the language of the ordinance, it is a very direct statement about what this community values and what this community is asking people who live in homes to do. So some people will say, maybe that's your value and not my value. But I think as an overall, when we sit up here as a council, we're making an overall statement about how we want our city to look. And one of the issues, we've talked about barking dogs, is when we have campaigned and knock door to door. Another issue we hear over and over and over is litter and trash. We hired many years ago a litter control officer that has helped tremendously. Yet here's another piece of the pie that we've just kind of waffled with over the years that I feel like we need to tighten up.
Mayor Butler?
Thank you. I had a couple of questions before I make comments. In this tweaking of the ordinance, is it, are we looking at new receptacles or garbage containers, is this addressing that as well? Or is that a different future discussion?
That would be a future discussion.
Okay, okay. But I guess the concerns that I have with the ordinance, with the strikeout, I do agree that litter and trash has been an issue. I think we have been making some progress with the hiring of a litter control officer. Director Paskey's acknowledged too, more citations have been given out, that I applaud as well. The concerns I have with the strikeout of, from the street behind the front edge of the house, I think can be very challenging with the geography we have here in Athens, with the hillsides, our elderly population, as well as people with disabilities. To me, this is a concern also for corner lots and through properties. I have a through property, so I'm not quite sure where I'd put my trash receptacles, because even though our house address is on Second Street, our building is closer to Raritan. So if I were to put my trash around back, or what would be the back of the house would now be probably visible from Raritan. My neighbor has a very discreet spot where she puts her, she's a retired lady who has her trash receptacles right next to her back side door. So for her, the kitchen door comes right out at the side of the house, and it's within my view, I can see it, but it's also convenient and clean for her. So I guess I have, I have, I have a little concern with the strikeout, I guess. And I don't know if there's a friendly middle ground, or if there's, I do acknowledge that the slides presented with the discreet screens are pretty or nice or a potential way to hide trash. I do think that that works. I don't know if that's an inconvenience or a challenge for people to build or make. Those are some of the concerns I have with the strikeout.
I also agree, my house is on a through property. My garbage can is, you know, on the back, but if you drive down Andes, which is a drive or an avenue or something.
An old alley.
Yeah, well, it's an old alley. But, you know, you see it, though it's just kind of discreetly there. And however, so I think we need to figure out also, we have talked about some kind of process to allow for when elderly, because like my neighbor, she's not going to drag around a 20-gallon garbage can, because she makes about this much garbage. And, you know, for a week, a plastic bag is fine for hers, and that's what she puts out. So I think there needs to be some kind of acknowledgement that some people just don't, don't need or don't, can't handle, you know, whatever garbage cans, so.
I'd like to say that my concern is also individuals living with disabilities and having a mechanism in place for allowing for something such as that, for them to be able to store their trash in an efficient place, as opposed to something that's going to cause them undue hardship.
Before I go on with some data, two questions. One, how does the code office deal with those mechanisms and those disabilities? And who buys and who doesn't in the contours? It is a very difficult task for us. I'm not saying we don't want to do it, it's just with the transient nature of our city that's changing constantly, how do we maintain, who can do what? That's one. And two, when it says shall be kept in containers stored out of view, out of view from what? No matter where you put it, somebody's going to see it. If you look out the window, I can see behind your house. We got to define out of view from what? And that's not defined, and that's where I come with the real problem, because I can tell you right now, somewhere, somebody's going to see that trash can, wherever it's sitting. So those are real problems that I see with this. In 2010, our office actually enforced this code, the way it was written, or the way it was written before, where it would have to be out of view from the street. We just did the west side, I just, we just did a loop, going up Second Street, up Lancaster, downstate, through Walker and through there. I think we did about 100 houses that we went by. If I remember serves me correctly, 46 of them were in violation. We actually gave those people warnings. The phone calls and the complaints that we received from our office was beyond belief. I mean, we were really criticized. So we come up with a policy to enforce it, as long as they're behind the front edge of the house in a clean and orderly manner. And that's the way we've been enforcing it. Just because you see the trash cans in the way you see them out front or the trash bags sticking out from the top of it, I can reassure you that those people have received tickets. I can almost guarantee it. And it's still going to happen if we move these around. So in light of this, two weeks ago, I sent the guys out to five different neighborhoods throughout the city. Four of them are R1 neighborhoods. We did the Near East Side, we did the West Side, the Far East, the South Side, and then we did the Student Area, down around Franklin Grover, Stewart, and through there. We did, the total numbers were 951 homes. 363 of them were in violation. Thirty-eight percent. The numbers on the Near East Side and the Far East Side were just as great in violation as the numbers on Mill and Palmer. So we are going to be affecting nearly four out of 10 residents within this city with violations of moving their trash cans to a place that we don't know where to tell them they can move them to. It's going to be an issue. And all I can say is, when they call me, now at $50 a pop, I'm going to have to say, call your council member. That's all I can say. I'm sorry, but I just don't know what else to do here on this one. I thought through our ad hoc committee that we were moving forward, looking into the uniform trash cans, single stream, and pursuing that route first before we did any drastic changes like this. I thought that was what we were going to do. And this is a total change from that, and if it goes through, we'll enforce it, but be prepared. I mean it.
John, of the 300 and so people you said would have been citable, some of them may have had other options. I, in my drive around on Sunday, yesterday, there was a few houses I saw that there was another option. It was just either, for whatever reason, it was there.
But what is that option, when you say you're not defining what out of view means? I can look out my window into the backyard of the person next to me and see their trash. No, it doesn't say that.
That's the issue.
So it's got to be defined.
I guess one of the issues is that we're trying to deal with the super bad issue, the chronically nasty
Some of the pictures that were up there.
Right.
And I say we're dealing with those.
But you have to deal with everybody equally and fairly.
Yeah.
That, so we need to look at that issue. I mean, I'm always amazed at how much garbage some houses produce. You know, and the single stream hopefully would help to address that.
Yeah.
You know. However, I also noticed that people in certain rental houses, they don't have very, they have garbage cans, they have no lid, and those sort of things. So maybe that's where the uniform garbage can comes in. Because I think a lid is essential, because the dogs get into it, and raccoons, and all those sort of things. And then it makes it even messier. But maybe what, what we need to do is look at how, what was struck out and such, because I think enforcement is a really key issue, because you can have great code, but if it's not enforceable, then it's not great code. It does, and it almost makes the situation worse, because then people are feeling that they're not being treated fairly, or they're being, you know, kind of picked on. And it would be nice if everybody worked together and they, you know, people had good garbage cans and a decent place to put it. Because I'm sure that, you know, people don't want to walk in and out of their house or sitting on their porch where their garbage can is out front, because quite frankly, in warm weather, it's, you know, it stinks, and who wants that? I mean, I would think that people, you know, it's a quality of life issue. So we need to figure out, maybe this isn't ready, this particular section is not ready to go up before council as an ordinance, that we need to work on. I think that the fines are right on, but. I think that the fines are right on, but.
Remember Butler?
I was just going to add too, that I, I used to be a neighborhood member, with member Michelle Pappy, so I know, I've driven up and down North Congress, I lived there for two years, I know it's an issue. And I know that there's, there's houses, and there's rental units, and there's places in our community that are a wreck on a consistent basis with this trash, and, and their placement, and over the top garbage cans. And, and maybe perhaps our first effort is the uniform garbage cans with lids that are attached, that are sturdy and strong and indestructible, and the single stream. Because I have a feeling, once we move the single stream, I think we're really going to collect a bigger, I think college students and people in the community are going to embrace that model, and we're going to start seeing better use of, and less garbage and more recycling. It's unfortunate, the number of recyclables that I believe end up in a trash can, unfortunately. And then, and then over the top of it, and with no lid, and it becomes a mess. And I agree, it becomes a sanitary issue, a health issue, and problematic, and a blight in our community. So I don't have all the answers either. I, I definitely feel that this is a valuable issue that we're looking at, and it is, it is a quality of life concern.
I just want to emphasize, we'll do whatever, whatever way passes. That's not the issue. We'll do it. I just want to point out some of the problems that could, that this could create.
You know, in our code group that met all those months, we, we did have some landowners who were part of that, rental people who own businesses. And the acknowledgement from the people who were in our group were, some of these places could be improved, that there are solutions to these problems, whether you have an enforceable, or, you know, the ordinance, there are, are solutions, but there are some people who, for whatever reason, maybe the same house I've driven by for 21 years, who don't change that. You've had conversations with them as well. I feel like the general people in our community will, after this conversation, after it's in the press, will kind of reassert, most reasonable people will reassert, you know, reevaluate their situation, say, wow, I wonder what that looks like as I drive by, and, and, and maybe they'll think of a different place to put it. But I also believe that in some of these properties, there are solutions. And for whatever reason, when they do a yearly rental inspection or whatever, because of the way this was written or not written, it's not being dealt with. And it, it, we, we can't put it to the side, in my opinion, again, until we get uniform trash cans. The fact is, there will still be trash cans sitting out front of the house. So that is not a value that I personally, as a council person, and many people in my ward want to see continue to happen. So that's, that's where I come from.
Very nicely.
A question, the language taking out this phrase, "from the street behind the front edge of the house," was that from the code subcommittee that was working on this, or?
No.
No.
Okay, so it's a recommendation at this point. Second question, how far are we away from getting uniform trash containers? Just a best world, best case scenario, could we get them yet this year?
Well, I know Paul's got the budget on him, finding money.
We're looking at it, it'd probably have to do with our, our re-upping our, or putting out an RFP out for trash and recycling, all of that, we extended that one year, if you remember. And so sometime in next year, we'll have to start having that discussion.
A lot is conditional on what the county's doing with the solid waste district, county, dual county, Hockingen, Athens are doing about a MRF. Again, this is being driven by the recycling side, but it would dovetail, since we tried combining both the recyclables and the trashed as one package, so to speak. So I'd say at least a year away.
Okay.
One is, if you look at the strikeouts, of course, one thing would be, to answer, to clarify a little bit for Mr. Paskey here, would be to remove the strikeout from the street. So to say, shall be kept in containers stored out of view from the street. That would be one.
From the address street, to, because I think the people who have houses that have, you know.
You can modify this, this is still in committee, as you say.
Right.
Another solution, of course, in terms of, personally, I've always been trying, I, I recognize that the problems of having to get it out of view, I've, I've got people who think it's out of view until they pull their car out of the driveway. And the car was in front of it, and it was out of view until they drove away, just like the dog.
I noticed a few of those, I didn't take those pictures.
That's true.
I am, I'm personally not enamored with the little shelters that are built in front of, in front setback. I mean, we have rules against fences in front setback, sets restructured in the front setback. So when you start talking about, let's build these little sheds, I've noticed some of the sheds also become positive, become the big trash can, they just throw, rather open the gate.
I understand.
The gate's been broken a while because somebody hung on it, they throw it over the top.
That's a health and safety or a citation issue.
We've got big issues with those, yes.
Yeah, so build more of these would be a problem. Realize if we're going to implement this, and 38% of people will be coming at us with pitchforks, or whatever utensils they use to clean up the trash.
I think that would come down, because I think a lot of those were places that have all the other alternatives pretty quickly.
I think the number will actually get closer to 45 to 50% when we start looking at the entire city. We actually cover, this is Elmwood, Sunnyside, Maplewood, Ransom, Graham, Townsend, Canterbury, Old Coast, Roxbury, these are the neighborhoods we did this at. This isn't Mill, Palmer, Stewart, Congress, High Street.
I drove down quite a few of those streets yesterday and saw maybe a total of four.
I think what we're trying to differentiate between is, it's kind of like the nuisance party law. You have your parties, and then you have your nuisance parties. You have your, you know, well-behaved garbage can that's behind the house, and then you have the out of control garbage can that's all over, every day, all week. And then you have the person who may be gone for four days, that didn't bring their garbage can in, and it's sitting there. And what, what's really getting people down is these, it's the out of control, just garbage. And it's, and I, we have to be able to figure out, not be punitive for those people who, you know, otherwise you look, they have shrubs, and they have trees, and they have garbage can at the end of their driveway. That, you know, that's a difference between a house that has, you know, a lawn, a non-existent lawn with a zillion, you know, cigarette butts, and the garbage can there with it overflowing, and the recycling bin that's filled with garbage. I mean, those are two, and we need to figure out how to.
And George helps with that.
Those people are getting cited. I can reassure you, those people are getting cited.
But they need to, maybe with the increasing of the fines, they'll actually do something about it.
One alternative would actually be to have a grace period before we start hattering with $50 a shot.
Sounds great.
That's one possibility. I mean, if, putting this in ordinance, you know, again.
Wasn't there a 30-day?
Bill Sock may have no problem with this. The implementation's going to be a monster. And again, if we, you know, we can point to you guys and say, you are the evil, evil dare-doers there or something.
Phenomenal. Gets yelled at.
We're the evil ones.
But, but the fact is, there is, there is a problem out there. We can see there's a problem. Again, some of the solutions I'm not happy with, the little boxes in front, the telephone boxes, or whatever you want to call it. The implementation, if we're at 38%, it's going to take a while to steer that ship where you know, not going to get a lot of kickback on this. But, you know, as I say, if you look and say how you want to interpret it, if you can clarify that piece there, from, from the street, from the address street, whichever way you want to do that, that, these are things you might, might look at modifying, to clarify how we do enforce it. Otherwise, we'll take it out on our own policy level, and we can be vague on it as well, or, or as tight as it gets.
I, I agree with what you just said a few minutes ago, and that is about, you know, the spin-up time, you know, how much time are you going to give people to educate them that this policy is coming into play, this ordinance is coming into play? I know one of the things you mentioned, John, was, was it already existed, and now going and enforcing it in 2010, and getting a lot of pushback? And it was because people were all of a sudden now seeing a citation on their, on their.
We just did warnings.
Or warnings.
Those were just warnings.
Yeah.
And we got this. And, and, Chris, what you're talking about is, we can't pick and choose.
And then tenants as well. It gives them a, a opportunity to call up their landowner and say, uh, we can't be getting these tickets, we have nowhere to put our trash, you need to help us with that.
But there may not be anywhere.
Well, then they have to figure out how to screen it.
See, now with that comment, with, with going ahead and screening it, here's my fear, is you may be putting undue, you know, financial burden on somebody to kind of come up with something to, to bill the screen or on something, just saying, I mean, thinking about the entire citizenry of Athens, talking about.
Well, I, I think it gets back to this nuisance idea, that there are, it just seems that certain properties are just trashy, you know? They just are, you know, I mean, the thing is, is that they don't, they just don't care. And they'll just try to limit the amount of money that they'll put into their property for whatever. And, and you don't, it's like conflating the, those sort of people with the person who has the garbage can at the end of the street, or the end of the driveway. Or, you know, it's, it's reasonable, but it's in view, you know? And, and so that's a really difficult thing, because, you know, like cans, you know, you could see it from part, from the back street, and not from the front street. And how do you deal, you know, I guess it's, maybe we need to look at the health, the health and safety aspects, and beef those up, that says that if you have garbage that's overflowing, that you get, you know, a $200 fine, because it's a health issue. You know, I just, I think that the enforcement issue is, I agree with John, that it is huge as it's been now.
I, I.
I just wondered, does, does removing, as you're suggesting, taking from the street and adding that text back in, does that help in terms of enforcement?
View from the street?
How would it read?
It would, it would read, out of view, and it would add the text back in.
That is the one we enforced four years ago, view from the street. That's the way it used to be written.
And that was the one that had the problems.
And that's the one we got the kickback on. So that's when we came up with the policy of clean and orderly behind the front edge of the house. If it's not clean and orderly, if the lids are off, and the trash is coming out the top, the bags are around, and, and for the very same people, if we change this ordinance, I still think those very same people that we're giving violations to, we're going to continue doing it, and they're still going to get violations. It's, I don't know if it's going to change those.
But it's going to be a lot more expensive.
Yeah, we're up in the fines. So we're, since we're up in the fines, let's see where it goes that way.
So the way this reads now, correct me if I'm wrong, we should never be witnessing cans.
From the street.
In the front of a, of a house, or from the street. They should be off to the side, or the front, behind the front edge, is that correct?
Behind the front edge of the porch.
That was administrative, the, from the front edge.
Yeah, that is correct. And if they are in front of the house.
That is not the way it read.
Oh, it's not the way it used to read?
No, no.
If, if they're in front of the house, they get a ticket.
Okay.
And that's happened, unless, there, there are a few houses around town that don't have any other option, a couple of them on Union Street, that, I mean, it's, you have sidewalk, and then a 50-foot drop-off. So we have given, given some provisions to a few around town, but the majority, if it's in front of the house, and then that goes for recycling bins as well, they are getting, they're, they're getting ticketed right now. So.
Ms. Kornansky, if you want to take the podium?
Ms. Kornansky, 56 Mile Street, member of the West Side Neighborhood Association beautification committee, that, as a committee member, we brought this forward. And I would like to say one thing, I think that was a typo on my part. We meant to leave in from the street, so I stand corrected on that. So yes, that was crucial, and, but I'd like to make a couple of comments, just listening to the discussion here. I think that if people realize what the law is and how it's enforced, I've talked to several people that didn't know they couldn't have their trash to the side of their house. These are homeowners, or out front in this, in this brick area, but you could see it right from the street. And they said, oh, I really didn't know that. I said, well, no, you really need to get it out of sight. So the information process, I think, is important, and if people are good citizens, they're willing to obey the laws. How many people say, I love living in Athens, I love being a citizen of Athens? And so if they're going to be that way, and feel that way in this town, then they're probably going to follow the rules. I was one of those people that, back when they went and did those 100 people, I had a warning. My trash can was sitting on the front porch, and you actually could hardly even see it. And it's, I don't know, 50, 60 feet from the street down the bottom of a hill, and I actually didn't use it as a trash can, I used it as lawn, a place to put noxious weeds, and I'd put them in there. And I moved it around to the back of the house, because I could. I mean, it was more convenient on the front porch, because that's where the gardens were, but, I mean, that's what you do. And I suppose some of you might remember this, Alice's Restaurant, Arlo Guthrie, taking out the trash officer, I didn't know, right? And once he knew, that he did become a good citizen. So I think that when people over on May, because I drive by there, and I see some people out their backside door, along their sidewalk, about five feet from the back of their house, right, have their trash cans, it's probably very convenient to walk out the door. But if they were told to move them behind the house, what's five feet? They would probably do it. People would do this. I think if you start at the most egregious places, and we, we brought those egregious places up, we know what we're talking about. Several of them, most of them are in a certain section of town, but having traveled around all of the city, you can go to our in Avon, I mean, there's some places, right, on the Far East Side, right? Not a lot, but they stand out even more, because there's fewer of them, right? Whereas you drive down West State Street, or North Congress, you know, it's just like, oh, that's how the scenery's painted here, right? So I think if you start at the most egregious and start cleaning them up, and go uphill to the least egregious, then you could say to people, rather than going to the least egregious, and saying, you got to put it behind the house, and then, you know, homeowners are complaining, how could, why would I have to do this, right? Then, because they can just ride down on West State Street and see like tons of trash cans all over, and they're thinking, well, I'm calling code office, what do I have, what my trash can behind my house, when, look at this, right? You start at the most egregious places, and you work your way up. And a time period, when we initially did this back in April, we thought that over the summer would be a really nice learning curve, but now the summer's passed. And as much as it took us months to put all this together, we thought that you would just like move it right along. And so, you know, in our own ignorance and impatience, it takes you months to move this along, and I understand that, right? So I'm hoping that we can move this forward with a change in language. And for those particular properties that are on corners, that have peculiar terrain, Mr. Paskey said at present that they give certain leniencies to some property, properties right now under the current, the way the current code is written. So I'm sure that there would be some leniencies. If you're driving by a corner lot, and you're not on the main street, you're going down the side street, or the through lots, and there's their trash cans up behind their house with the lids on, nothing spilled out, you know, you could talk to them and say, if there's anywhere you could put them, in a garage, or whatever, if there's nothing available, then there is a certain amount of leniency that has to go on, it goes on already, right? So I think it would continue to go on. But what we would do is, we could solve this problem. So when you start painting newspaper boxes, and designing the parking garage, and we have this great facade in Athens, so then when you walk out of that facade into the neighborhoods, you also have something really beautiful to look at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Okay. I think that we will, I mean, I certainly like the idea of an educational period, of having a period of time to where, if we move in this direction with this particular language, or even if it were to be changed from the view, the view from the street and straight beyond the front edge of the house, or however we, we tool this particular ordinance, I think what's paramount is giving the citizens of Athens enough time to prepare themselves for, you know, for figuring out where to move their trash can to, I myself live on one of those strange intersections in town to where I've got, I'm on Canterbury, but I have Penny Lane that runs along one side, and then I have Coventry in the back, and so you can see my house from virtually every possible angle.
There's four people sitting in this room right now who are in violation.
I know I am.
Well, no, I'm not.
Not under this, the current code.
My garage's the door shut.
But with the changing, I would have to move my.
Well, then I guess we'd have to move them.
I would have to move my trash can into my garage, if I was.
Well, a tribute to the city coffers, how's that sound?
There you go. You weren't one of them.
Well, I would like to see.
No, you're not.
If you're, the committee's going to move on this thing, I'd like to see something that would be explicitly in the ordinance, that would allow the code office, that under those peculiar circumstances of geography, topography, or disability, that they can in some way grant an official waiver from all these other standards that would apply to people like me and the rest of us, that would then satisfy that, those conditions, rather than just sort of, well, the law's written like this, but, yeah, we'll, we'll sort of finagle away, let's, let's make it official, let's probably put something in there that says, yeah, you do have the authority to do it.
You're trying to micromanage a law, though.
That's right, yeah.
I mean, laws are.
But that's, that's all I've been hearing tonight, is how do we micromanage this thing down, everybody keeps saying, there must be a solution, I keep hearing that, well, there has to be a solution out there, you know, we, we need to find a solution, and we've been back and forth and up and down, right, left and center, and it all keeps, comes down to, we don't have a solution.
I think it comes down to enforcement.
How about being reasonable, I mean, we're not.
Well, wouldn't that be reasonable, be able to grant a variance to someone who has a problem that, that can't meet all the standards that we're applying?
So, goes, goes to appeals, is that what you're saying, that it's not a zoning problem?
Can I make a comment, I have a specific comment on this?
Yeah.
So, what they do in Morgantown, which was where we investigated, I mean, it's happened, you know, you've heard the word on this, okay, right?
Similar topography, similar.
Right, if they do it, I don't know why we can't do it, right, but, here's what they do, they say, city administration, oh, here we are, I just lost it, oh, residents living in a home or dwelling unit that does not provide an area to keep toters, so they are already moved to the toting system, right, out of public view, may obtain a waiver with proper approval from the city manager, so you put a form up.
I know I got that from somewhere.
Right, see, I already, well, so you put a form up on the website next to where you, potholes, um.
Whatever.
Yeah.
Trash. Trash.
And, and trash waiver, simple, they fill it out, I mean.
And the mayor reviews it, it said city manager.
City manager, well, it would be the service safety director who would probably bump it to Mr. Paskey, because, I mean, that would make sense, right?
So, the waiver would be topography, rationale would be lack of storage area, rationale would be I'm lazy, rationale would be I'm disabled, rationale would be what?
Okay.
My landlord doesn't agree with me.
All of the above.
All of the above.
But let's strike out late, you know, I mean, topography is one thing, you know, some kind of physical ailment, I mean, that would be another reason, right, and, you know, I mean, it's simple, we're all smart, right?
Theoretically.
Relatively.
Okay, absolutely, so, you know.
Okay, and.
Five or six criteria.
Okay, and we have.
Well, I can call Morgantown and ask what they use and give it to you, or somebody here could call Morgantown and ask them, I mean, right?
Is this, is this a waiver that's renewable, is this permanent, is this go with the ever flow of the student population, 74% of the city?
Okay, let's think about that, no, that's an excellent question.
Yes.
So, if it's topography, then it would.
Be permanent?
It would, it would have to, you would have to, at least, I mean, you could check up on it, but, you know, basically, unless somebody's going to come and cut the back of their heel down, or fill it in, or, you know, whatever, but if it's, if it's an individual need, if it's an individual need, then that could be a yearly exemption that they have to renew, so, whatever other reason you might want to think would be probable cause for an exemption.
Better hire me to hold two of them.
I would also say that in a tenant situation, that it should be the responsibility of the owner of the property to provide for the situation as the law provides, not for the tenant, that that should be the responsibility of the owner of the property, that shouldn't be put over to the tenant, now, if it's.
Because that would be too tedious, I mean, they're already here.
Right, and, and, and also, once it's established, now then, if the trash is not put there, or whatever, then that's a tenant situation, but that the proper storage should be provided by the owner of the property, that's not the responsibility of the tenant, they just have to follow where the proper storage is placed.
We can always keep discussing this, or we can come up with an ordinance and vote on it, and then some may like the ordinance and some may not.
Well, to go along with the educational sort of thing, I think that it, it may, now that it's out in general conversation, because it's never been publicly on TV land, presented, and so, what maybe we need to hear from people in the next two weeks about this. That would be great. And, you know, the people who have their garbage cans at the end of the driveway, and this, you know, what do they think, how, and, we need to hear, and this is the start of the educational process, you know, personally, I think that even with topography, shrubs are great, you know, you can, you can do landscape design that just hides all sorts of stuff, and maybe what we need to do is, is, like, for some cities, they have best management practices, may we need to have a best management practice that goes beyond just having the boxes, which I agree are problematic, but different things of, this is a good solution, and this is a bad solution, and do that more so people can kind of see the ideas that we're, we're talking about, and ideas that are bad, I don't, that's just an educational idea.
Okay, gear-proof shrubbery, I'll write that down.
I love shrubbery.
What I would love to say in terms of the public conversation, if you move this forward, you have three readings, right, so that's every other week, that's two, for six weeks, it is public conversation, it's, get it, uh, you know, it could go on the city's website, starting next Monday, saying, this bill's coming up, you need to think about it, or, you know, that's six weeks of public conversation, if you put this off, then how, this is not going to happen.
Right, but I, I think.
That's what I think.
One of the things where a little, there's some words, either, whether the, out of view from the street, or it's out of view, those, that's what you're discussing, you said that there's some kind of.
I said it was a typo, I didn't mean to scratch out from the street.
From the street.
So, putting that back in.
So, if we put that back in, that's probably more, and maybe if we could put in from the address, street, however you would mail the address, street, to kind of deal with the people who have corner lots and such, so, maybe that would be changed.
So, I mean, see if I can have this correct, is that it would stay, the thing that would be struck from this is behind the front edge of the house.
Correct, and that was actually an administrative add-on, was never voted on in city council,
so actually, what you're doing right now is.
That's accurate.
Is just taking it back to where it should be, and that, those words, that phrase, behind the front corner of the house should never have been in there.
I want to just follow up with something that Ms. Kornansky said, and I, I agree wholeheartedly, I, I've thought about this for quite a while, and I've often, what I've been waiting for is, I've been waiting to hear, but there's no mechanism for them to hear, I've been waiting to hear from the south side, I've been waiting to hear anything from the far east side, I've heard very little, I have heard from the, the near east a little bit, I've heard more from Anna, I've heard from WCA, so, as a county member, city councillor at large, you know, I, I want to hear from all the other constituents across the city as well, as we move forward, and I think that you're absolutely right, we've got, there's three more readings to go through, there's time, it'll be in the news tomorrow morning, I'm assuming, so, two days, I'm sure that maybe, you know, David DeWitt's sitting and watching TV, who knows, so anyway, I think that, that.
If it gets amended, they would actually add some more time to it, so you've got plenty of time to.
Thank you, thank you, there, absolutely.
Shape it in the next six weeks, easily.
I also want to acknowledge, you know, Director Paskey, I, I, I understand the growing pains that may result from this, and the backlash that we may hear, I hate using that term, but, you know, what we end up hearing, it's, I'm an educator, I think education is a big part of this whole process, you know, informing people, getting them to learn, you know, it's, it's, you know, I'm a psychologist as well, it's behavior change in a lot of cases, and.
Big part for us, too, is, I just don't know, this is just plain of the mayor, if our staff can handle this, bottom line, I mean, all the other communities that we're talking about, Athens is the only community that I'm aware of that has an annual inspection policy, our code officers are already tied up doing annual inspections, Morgantown, I'll call them, but I can almost guarantee you, they're on complaint base, Miami, all the other universities in the MAC, they're complaint based only, so their code officers are free to do these things, we do annual housing inspections, we can definitely write these issues up when we do them, housing inspections, but with the transient nature, they're going to come right back out, you know, how, this could take, this could take years to get it in place.
But we're not talking about, we're talking about a structural change in terms of where the trash is placed, this isn't overflowing trash we're talking about, we're talking about the view of where you place the trash receptacles, that, once that's solved at a particular property.
It won't be solved.
That's, you know, for most properties, it's solved, are there going to be difficult properties, yes?
I mean, if landlords put, say, put garbage can here, you know, as part of being responsible renter agent, rental agent, then, you know, if they make it so that it's really easy.
We do that with new building, buildings and new developments, we say you have to have so much for trash, for bicycles, for all kinds of things.
Commercial projects, not all single-family houses, we know.
Right, but if, we're trying to encourage people who, you know, make it easy for people who may be living in their house on a per-month basis, to be able to do it, and we're, it seems like we're always singling out rentals, but I think that probably if you went and looked at the problem places, if you made it the easiest way for somebody who was moving in year after year, that you say, this is where you put the garbage, and the garbage can goes out on Thursday, garbage day is on Thursday, because, I mean, like in our neighborhood, nobody knows, the students don't know for the first two weeks when the garbage comes, and they're learning it, you know, that should be just something, here's the garbage, here's the recycling, this is how you do it, this is where it needs to go, that just seems like something that you would want to tell your tenants, so that they can be, you know, good neighbors, it doesn't seem like it's, you know, rocket science, so, and I think that's one of the things where we're figuring out, how that education goes on, to put it forward.
Okay, this'll be a project, I mean, worst case scenario, is we get some Essence of Athens decal saying, this is where your garbage can is, so, X, tomorrow's spot.
A big flowers.
Here, or, you know, the raccoon is.
And, and again, you know, we'll, we'll figure it out, it's a, we got to start someplace, and again, there'll probably be some, what we'll do is we'll get a little card with all the city council email addresses on it, so you know how, so you get that wanted feedback, how's that sound?
Thank you.
It's on her business card, right?
That's what we live for, you know?
I know.
Our happy email.
Again, I, I'd like to, I want to thank the ad hoc committee, because they're the ones who really got this ball rolling, but it's not, it's really not something new, I mean, this is, I'm sure, I've heard about things like this for quite a while, a number of years, not just months, I also want to thank the, the WCA Beautification Committee for bringing this to light again and pushing to, to make this happen, so, we'll amend some of the language in this and move this ordinance forward, and encourage the citizens of Athens to reach out to us as council members, and give us input.
If I could, I'd like to thank us for, for moving this forward, for a lot of support, Steve has been great, he came to our neighborhood meeting and put up with all of our questions, we did some brainstorming, it was actually an excellent meeting, we had Anna people there, and Michelle Pappy was there, and Michelle's been great supporter of this, so, and I want to thank the mayor for supporting us also, so, thank you.
Oh, how exciting, now we can get to the excitement, okay, I want to introduce ordinance, this will be one of our exciting things we get to do, because there's a request for a lot split, that's within our three-mile jurisdiction, and this is for a lot that is in the plains, it's located on East First Street, in the plains, it's a lot split submitted by Timothy Lutz, and basically, we, we do these because it's in our three-mile zoning, our three-mile planning radius, and so we can allow or not allow a minor lot split, this particular lot split, the Planning Commission has recommended it, however, it needs certain types of variances associated with it, first variance is, it, most lot for commercial parcels, a lot needs to be 20,000 square feet, this particular lot is 19,297 square feet, so they would like a variance for those square feet that it doesn't have, the lot frontage width to depth is 16 feet, so it's a little narrower, it's narrow in fact, as opposed to being square, that's kind of how, where 30 feet is the minimum, so they would like to have a variance for that, and, so, and the maximum depth to width ratio is greater than three to one, because it's a long narrow, and then, for the residential parcel, so they're basically splitting off a commercial parcel from a residential parcel, once again, the square footage for a lot is slightly under the 20 square, 20,000 square feet that's required, and once again, the lot frontage is slightly below the 90 feet that's required, it's 89.78 feet, so they would like those variants associated with this men, with this ordinance, we have all the sign-off on the lot split from all the various requirements from the city council, from the Planning Department, Planning Commission, and everybody else, so.
How many, three variances, then?
Um, four.
Three.
Three, so, yes, three.
Do you like, I clarify this one a little more, this, this went through the Planning Commission, but this was a lot split in 2006, the residential part broke off from, this was a flag lot, and still is technically, but the residential part broke off from the back part in 2006, so, what the owner is requesting, and it, we require 30-foot access to get to the rear of a lot, in case there would be a subdivision there, so there's room for an adequate road, all that's back there are storage units, so it's obvious there's not going to be a subdivision built back there. built back there. And the property owner has requested that 30-foot of that access going back be given to, 14 feet of that 30-foot be given to the home. So...
So they have a better lot.
As Debbie did earlier today, this is an amendment, basically, to an ordinance that was granted in 2006 to allow 14 more feet of that 30-foot strip going back to go to the house that's there. And it went through the planning commission July?
Yeah, July.
I think it's got approved there, so...
When was the original variance?
The original variance was in 2006.
From what?
From, I'm sorry?
Who did that?
Council did it. Zero, one oh six.
Yeah, one oh six, that zero six.
And part of the thing, again, it's not a normal lot configuration, which is why it needs variance. It's essentially a flag lot, which is what they call it. And the back part has been developed as storage, so it's not going to have a high travel. Really what does provide a little bit more room for the building, the residence, if I understand correctly, there's a fence there.
There's already a fence, a tree line there, so...
Yeah. The fence line was always there, unfortunately, they moved the property line behind the fence, if I understand.
Right. So, I mean, it's really, it's making a residential lot more...
Residential lot, yeah.
So that won't... That's easy.
Okay. And you can go home.
I can go home, yes.
And we want to talk about electrical aggregation?
Yes.
No, I think, yes, John, you can go. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
You know, I've been getting more phone calls about...
Electrical aggregation, you mean?
Well, about, you know, please sign up for a miscellaneous, sketchy company that I've never heard of before. So I would...
Okay, what... Should I bring this up to speed on this? Okay, what I gave you as a handout, of course, is an agree... A couple of things. One is the ordinance authorizes, at zero, 30, 14, which authorizes the mayor to get into an agreement with, go in with the, for aggregation with the county. Essentially, what you're seeing is that we both put that on the ballot in November. In May, Ainsville added to the mix. I believe we've got three villages that are on the ballot. We have actually been approved, I believe, as an electrical aggregator, both of us together. What we anticipate, of course, is that we'll get the other villages and cities involved over time. Rather than have to go back and get approval each time as a new entity, we want to create a council of governments. Council of government's been done before. Essentially, it's where we just enter into a pact and say, okay, we will set up a formation, a process where we can add new entities to this. Again, this is Southeast Ohio Public Energy Council, or SOPEC. We're modeling it after NOPEC, which is the North Ohio Energy Council. They have about 140 members. I want to expedite this because we're trying to, we're in the stage of negotiation. Also, on the last page, we have an update of what's going on. Jennifer was at the meeting this afternoon. Steve makes occasion when he's scheduled to make it. You can see we had put several goals in there. They're actually on the city website, if you wish to look at how the conditions we're aiming for. We put out a request for proposals, received five proposals. We put two of them together, basically two different entities we're negotiating with right now. These are the aggregators, as well as looking at the renewable component of what we want to see. We're trying to get this expedited as fast as possible, so I would like to get authorization to enter into a COG or a council of governments. You can... I do not know offhand, since it's hours late and I forgot to grab a copy of what Ohio devised code has on COGS, but it's in the revised code, I'm sure you can find it. Essentially, we were building a structure on that. We're having assistance from NOPEC, who thinks what we're going, the direction we're going is very good because we're going to organize Southeast Ohio, which doesn't really have a lot. You are getting a lot of calls because as we negotiate, we'll eventually get to putting a package together. The package will be better than somebody negotiating on their own. We'll have to have an out-doubt period, of course. The expectation, I think, from Roger Wilkins, our consultant, was that we should have this in place by mid-November, I believe. Again, we've got moving parts in terms of trying to get renewable factors in there. If you look at the update, we were looking at certain percentages of renewables, and we're going to go for that mix. So we're sitting there doing the negotiation, but we really want to get this re-slotted in as a COG or council of governments to the PUCO, so we can actually expand when need be. I'm looking at just the county level.
Yeah.
I know the other members, county in particular, are saying this could grow to something bigger, if possible, if it becomes worthwhile. So I'll take questions at that point.
So several of us were at the energy conference that occurred on Saturday, and I think going to, remember Falls' comment about getting phone calls from people, this is out there in the press. The other competitors, if you would like to say that, are probably really calling people in our service area because they know that we are looking to aggregate. So I don't know that we can give advice, but I... You have just said that we hope to have some type of agreement in November, and, you know, we want the information to be out there, how we are progressing, and citizens can take that and process that as they wish. But the bottom line is, we are moving very close to having some type of agreement.
Yes. But what is required, I would hope that this is brought up in council for a first reading, suspended for the next one for the 15th, if possible. If you want more information, I could actually get Roger here, or just shoot me emails and we can go from there. Again, it's in its early stages. As a small group, it doesn't have to have all the moving parts as a COG, but we can augment those as the group grows. If you look at NOPEC, they actually, because at the level, they are 140 entities, they have kind of gotten a second-tier representation layer, and it's become like a cake on that in terms of, you know, the each township and village versus, and county. But we're not there yet. Really what we want to do is be able to do it so we don't have to re-up every time the PUCO and have that lag time.
Right.
Did I miss anything?
No, I don't think so. The only thing I would add is just that, you know, as a resident, and one of our goals is to help streamline this process and to advocate for our residents, so that we don't have to try to each one of us navigate through this process, which is overwhelming. And, you know, I'm a newcomer to all this energy business, and there is certainly a steep learning curve, but ideally, I think we would, we'll be able to cut through all of the confusion and to offer all of our residents the best deal possible. And so that's the whole aim here, is to, and as we've spelled it out here, bring down the energy costs, provide savings to residents, and also to get some sustainability into our mix here, local generation wherever possible. So we have, you know, several different goals that we're working on, and we just ask for a little bit of patience. You know, we've all been champing at the bit to get this done, but it does take some deliberation because we want to do it right. We don't want to, you know, make too many mistakes along the way. So that's why, you know, the timeline changes a little bit, but we're looking at mid-November, so hang in there, and we're getting there.
I believe the two entities we're talking about is AP Energy, I think, and Power, which looks at the renewal component. They're each talking about covering different factors of how the aggregation will work, whether in terms of service providing and/or actually supply and what that supply would look like. Again, if you look at the last page, the mix we were trying for is everything from zero renewables to 100 percent, and with a gauge of what the cost will be and how that will actually reduce it. The numbers aren't there yet because we're still counting all the participants. I think we have 21,000 meters in the county, I think is, was the statement that was put out there about two weeks ago. It was in the, in the pre-request-for-proposal meeting. We had one about two weeks ago in here, three weeks ago in here, just to shape out what the suppliers could expect to see.
I know when we were at the energy conference, just maybe as a final comment, a lot of people asked about Ohio University, and there was a representative there at the conference from Ohio University who said he was wanting to meet with...
With Roger and Chris and all the other, the SOPEC members, yes.
Yes.
And that's including us, too.
And that was important, to do that.
So I would ask you to authorize us to enter into contract or accept it as a council government.
Tell me again, you want to...
Authorize us to enter into an agreement or a council of governments contract.
But you want to suspend?
Suspend it, yes.
At next?
Yes. Possibly with emergency clause if we want to get this rolling. So they, we don't get a bunch of people knocking on the doors all the time.
Okay. So therefore, if anybody has further questions, please talk to the mayor this week.
And you could review... Yeah, sorry.
Or whomever.
Both Councilmember Patterson and Cochran have been in negotiations at some level. Roger Wilkins, I believe, he's got, he's got a link. We have some documents actually on our city website right now, the RFP, which of course the deadline passed, some of the notes from the conference, pre-RFP conference, some of the feedback of that. I'll probably try getting this as a document on it at the update as well. The COG is still in draft form. It's being, it's pretty simple right now. It's probably as finished as we're going to do right now, but we're still talking to NOPEC and see if we need to add a few things. The actual contract, when I say contract, contract with the council of governments. The contract with the suppliers is going to be much more detailed and take some time. And I know we're, we've got to, we've got to have some assistance on that, so it's going to work out. So that's all I have on this, is more.
Okay, member nicely? If you'd like, starting now.
My handsome personnel items, yes. We have two major items, several miscellaneous items, the first of which is the pumper, the fire pumper truck and the financing for that, which we'll be moving forward on. We did have estimates and approximately $588,935 total. And, excuse me, and then adding in some hoses of $9,476. So it's $598,000 for the new pumper truck. And we received information from the auditor today saying that she has obtained loan information that we would be able to borrow money, and the rate would be 0.3 percent from Hocking Valley Bank for a one-year loan. And the recommendation of the finance committee at administration is to make a modest down payment on this, the total cost of approximately $25,000 out of our capital funds. And that would reduce then that $598,411 to $573,411 that we would need to borrow from Hocking Valley Bank. And Councilmember Patterson, any other details or information?
Just, this is a, this is a 1991 fire pumper truck, and it's already three years past its recommended life expectancy or term of service. Granted, it's being relied upon as a reserve engine. It still is taking up the slack for our frontline pumpers when need be. The only other thing is, again, to remind everyone that there is the agreement with the Ohio University to extend another five years of $50,000 annual installments towards fire equipment, much like they did with the ladder truck, which most of you remember. This would be the same moving forward, $250,000 total to go towards the pumper truck, so...
And then our next item is the armory and feasibility study.
Okay. In terms of this, putting this on, finance will get the information from auditor hack, I imagine, and try getting this started up. I remember the quote was good till mid-October, October.
Correct.
So we want to move on that as well.
Next item, the armory feasibility study.
The armory feasibility study, again, this has come up in committee before. So there'll be something coming forward next Monday night, which would be appropriation of $7,000 to go towards the structural integrity assessment of the armory. There will also be an ordinance moving forward that'll allow for the acceptance of donations to go towards the armory as well. I did mention that the Athens County Convention and Visitors Bureau is wanting to allocate 50, or $500, excuse me, to the, this assessment plan, this building integrity assessment, that would be a line item to accept donations to go into that, to make that happen.
I believe auditor hex that you put one in place for the armory, for the building.
I believe that'll actually be under, a line item, if I'm not mistaken, under Armory slash Hudson, which currently exists anyway, so just be adding that on.
We have other donation fund lines, just be adding it to that particular section.
Okay, thank you. We have several miscellaneous items, one of which I believe council members were provided with some information about salt that the city purchases, so I just want to acknowledge...
Just background information that you wanted to know about.
Correct.
That was questioned, and I've got some packets of salt if you want to try them out. I think Councilmember Eisner had a taste, I guess, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Did you bring anything for us to put it on?
No. Baloney, maybe?
In terms of just general information on how much we've spent in 2014, then $85,952 for road salt, that was for 1,431 tons. The water softening salt in 2014, 1,293 tons, totaling $129,000. So gives you an idea of how much we're needing to spend for those two different items for the city. In terms of some other financial appropriations that are needing to move forward, one of which will be a repair of a line on Cash Lane. And this is out on the south end of the city, near Blackburn.
South Blackburn, off South Blackburn.
And what's happened is, is this, it's a 1950s, '60s era 10-inch line, and it's broken about a dozen times over the last three months. And so we need, you know, the department's suggesting that it needs to be repaired with an eight-inch line to replace it. And we'll be doing, saving some costs because we'll be doing, I believe, something in-house.
Conversation I had with Director Stone there is that he has the money, he's going to move some money around in there, but he may be short for the end of the year, so we need to watch his 200s and 300s. Original estimate he was coming up was going to cost about $40,000, but he thinks he can do it closer to 25. So probably don't need to act as an appropriation immediately, at least that's what he's telling me. But the fact is, he's going to be draining a lot of his funds to get this done. It really serves as the hotel there, the motel, and a couple of houses. So there's not a lot of infrastructure there, and, which is why he's talking about going from a 10-inch to an eight, I believe. And again, I'm just putting it up forward because I don't, I don't... The conversation I had with him was, you know, at the weekend, was we got to do this soon, and we got, we don't have the money to do it. This one, I think he's able to cover that, but it will leave him short.
And then the other item was the demolition of the...
Oh, yes. We condemned a house on Depot Street many, about two or three years ago. We want to get it torn down. I do not have a price on that, but I think I'd have to ask Pass, John Pasky, I forgot to get a number from him before we left. So appropriate some money for that.
Can that be done in-house?
Not really. The difficulty with this house is actually set behind another house, so the access to it is pretty sketchy. And the fact is, it's in pretty bad shape, but it's, it's not worth, you know, it's a non-conforming house, and it's not worth the money to rebuild. Up the, towards the stairs, yeah, to the right. Yeah, you can...
Is this a house that the restore can get in and salvage, I know?
There's nothing really left in that.
Okay.
It's been scrapped out. Actually, for a while, people were throwing things in it as trash, trash location. We had a lot of that cleared out about two years ago, but it's been hanging fire, mostly because what happens is we have to do it ourselves, assess the property owner, put it on the tax rolls, and that means we're tying up money until we get the collection back, either from resale of the property or whatever occurs. So I'll, I'll see where we can scramble some money for that, but, and I'll get the number on it. I don't think it's over $10,000 or $12,000 at this point. I don't think it's over $10,000 or $12,000 at this point. The last item, and I think I mentioned it last time, was the chief pilot's requested, not the last one, I think that's, well, the last one I have, is the ordinance to transfers the K-9 equipment since the K-9 unit is retired as of last week, transferred to the Sheriff's Department, Athens County Sheriff's Department. I can get you, basically what they're talking about is, let's see, contributing the K-9 insert, which I think is probably the caging in there, heating/cooling bailout system, and a narcotics safe. And this would be turned over to the K-9 unit, the county sheriff. We're not going to continue with the K-9 unit for a couple of years until we shake out what we need to do with it. So at this point, there's been a request to share the equipment and donate to the Sheriff's Department. So we'll probably need something of that, made sure, saying that equipment is available.
And one, just one other piece of general information that our deputy service safety director shared with mayor and me about the online bill pay and some information on that. That was something that we had moved forward on earlier this year. And we had six, year-to-date, we've had 621 transactions for a total of $45,000. And 20,000 of that we did in August. So starting to take off. So thank you for being supportive of it and helping make it happen.
I thought I would use it, but that's okay.
That's all right. Other people are using it, so we're happy. And we hope they're happy, too, that it's providing a service. And I believe that those are all the items I have for finance.
Okay, I'll member Papi, expectation committee, a few things, not a lot.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we need to do a bit of an emergency, talk about it. And then we'll, in special session in a little while, put it forward. J-PAC is requesting that we close Park Place and a portion of Court Street on Tuesday, September 30th, with a rain date for Wednesday, October 1st. And the date of this, or the time, is 5:00 to 9:00 p.m. This is a barbecue sponsored by the Joint Police Advocacy Council, J-PAC, and we need to declare it an emergency. Some of the history of this is, in light of some of the issues that communities around the country are experiencing with their police, J-PAC and a group of other people had a meeting a few weeks ago and discussed the need for outreach. And so the idea here is to get police folks out there, the OU police will be there as well, and to meet your local police force. We encourage community and students, of course, to attend this. There's free food. And I think it's going to be Kaiser's Barbecue, if anybody knows about that, it's pretty good. So we are really encouraging people to come out and meet your police officers and the people that are out there, you know, keeping our community safe. Steve, did you have anything to add to this?
I do. Thank you for bringing this forward. This is, this was the brainchild of Chief Pyle and Chief Powers, again, under the Joint Police Advisory Council. And this is, the main event itself is going to be held right in front of Baker Center with the intent of complete engagement. Again, there is going to be food served. Don't know yet whether it's Kaiser's, so they have Kaiser... Sean Kaiser's not been contacted yet. However, there will be food. There will be refreshments. But again, this is, this is one of these great concepts in my mind to literally get people together in a common space on common ground and get to know someone by first name, which is something I heard, something interesting on NPR, that they said some of the better communities have that engagement, level of engagement, where people know officers by name, and this will be an event in an attempt to start moving in that direction. Because as I said, the Joint Police Advisory Council has been working phenomenally well through my lens and I think through a lot of other individuals. So this is one more thing to bind us together and not with handcuffs.
I like that word, engagement. I think that's, that's the key component here. That's the mission.
And everybody's invited.
Everyone's invited.
Six to 8:00 p.m. Six to 8:00 p.m. The street closure is from 5:00 to 9:00, but the event will be six.
And I believe you have a map with the ordinance, and I...
I do.
Requested to be suspended on second reading. So there's, so there's time, so it...
Oh, on Monday, next Monday.
Well, the second reading would actually...
Be Monday. It'll be next Monday.
This Monday, okay.
Yeah, because we still have a special session.
Oh, yeah. Special reading now, second reading now. Oh, yeah, special session, okay.
Okay. In light of the fact that we are going very long here, in terms of bicycle and pedestrian plan, this has been written up in the press. People know that there was a bike specialist here engaging our community and the biking community. That occurred August 28th. We actually have an advisory meeting on Friday. I don't think we need to talk about this much right now, other than to say, we as a community are discussing our bicycle and pedestrian plan and are engaging our, I'll use that word again, engaging our community to give council feedback and administration feedback regarding bicycle and pedestrian issues. So I'll just leave it at that tonight. If anybody wants to chime in, that's fine, but that's higher on our list of planning projects.
Yeah, I'll just add that member Cochran and I accompanied the cycling tour, and then I believe member Nisley was able to be present at the discussion.
I was as well.
I had to head off to work at that moment.
And member Cochran was there as well, too. Thank you.
We are ready to move into our special session. All council members, all council members are present. We have some ordinances for third reading, ordinance 7214. Member Cochran, you want to go with these? You've got a couple up here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I felt stuck here for a minute.
I'm supposed to read it, I'm sorry. An ordinance banning parking and closing that portion of Court Street from Mulberry to Carpenter on October 25th and 26th, 2014, in anticipation of a large number of people converging on downtown Athens, parentheses, Halloween weekend. Now, member Cochran.
Well, as many of you know, there's been a little controversy over what Halloween weekend is, but we are closing the streets on October 25th, so that we, in anticipation of lots of folks coming here for a big street party. And this has been bred and discussed, so I move for adoption of ordinance 7214.
All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 7214 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 7314. An ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting, to allow vending in a designated area on October 25th and 26th, 2014, Halloween weekend. Member Cochran.
Thank you. I move for adoption of ordinance 7314.
Second.
And all those in favor of ordinance 7314 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. I think ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 7414. An ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Section 13.04.10, unnecessary noise for scheduled bandstand performances hosted by the Clean and Safe Halloween Committee on October 25th and 26th, 2014, Halloween weekend, introduced by councilmember Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just as a reminder, this ordinance is suspending the noise ordinance in the uptown area, in particular on Court Street. With that said, I move to adopt ordinance 7414.
Second.
All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 7414 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Ordinance 7414 is adopted. Ordinance 7514. An ordinance establishing a glass-free drinking container zone on Court Street and adjoining sidewalks between Union and State Streets on October 25th and 26th, 2014, Halloween weekend, introduced by councilmember Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this is to keep our streets safe and clean during this period of time. Therefore, I move to adopt ordinance 7514.
Second.
All those in favor of ordinance 7514 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Ordinance 7514 is adopted. Ordinance 7614. An ordinance closing a portion of Court Street on Monday, October 27th, 2014, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. for trick-or-treat hosted by the Athens Uptown Business Association. Introduced by councilmember Cochran.
I move to adopt ordinance 7614.
Second.
Okay, this is, this is not our Halloween. This is for kids on Court Street. I guess you could, if you go in costume. Ordinance, all those in favor of ordinance 7614 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Ordinance 7614 is adopted. Ordinance 7714. An ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Title VII, Section 7.05. 7.05.26B1, city garage metered parking rates and regulations on Monday, October 27th, 2014, for the Athens Uptown Business Association trick-or-treat. Also, councilmember Cochran.
And this one is simply to help provide free parking for families who come uptown for the Athens Uptown Business Association trick-or-treat. And I move to adopt ordinance 7714.
I second.
All those, all those in favor of ordinance 7714 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign.
Remember to walk or ride your bike that day to city council.
True, true.
Even if we're not, okay. And now, all those in favor, did we say that? And nobody, nobody came up? Nobody said no? Okay, fine. So now we're, ordinance is for second reading. Ordinance 7814. An ordinance amending the 2,000 appropriation ordinance. We'll talk about that later.
No, suspend.
Oh, we did, never mind.
This is the main reason why we're having this special session.
Can you tell us anything about it?
The legislature is coming at the end of October, apparently.
This has to, do you want me to cover it, or you?
This is the salt and the CDBG.
This is the matting for the playground at the community center. Originally, we thought we had more time on it. That's why I didn't ask you to suspend rules last time. I got a call from the Arts Parks and Recreation Director saying, oh, they're ready to go. If they have PO, we can start it up, otherwise we'll lose our place in the queue and we'll wait till next year to put the matting on. Since we have the money, and this whole process started 2012, I think it was, I thought we'd put a jump on it. It's appropriated, I think, $31,000 to put the matting on the back end, south side of the community center playground.
So, yep. And, Mr. President, I move to suspend, consider the rules under suspension.
Okay. All those in favor of suspending the rules, excuse me? Oh.
Second.
Second. We need, we have a second. Now we have an, moving to vote to suspend the rules on ordinance 7814. All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The rules have been suspended. Okay. I'm sorry, member Nisley, you did say you'd like to suspend this?
Yes, and we have, so now, so now I'd like to...
Okay, so all those in favor of adoption of ordinance 7814 signify by saying aye.
I could adopt.
I'm sorry.
I'll second. I'll second it.
It's very late. So I move to adopt.
Second.
And once again, this ordinance is appropriating money in part for our matting for the playground so that we can get it accomplished before COVID.
Okay. All those in favor of ordinance 7814 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. This ordinance is adopted.
I don't think we need to suspend that.
Ordinance 8114. An ordinance authorizing the purchase of road salt for the street department and water softening salt for the water treatment plant and declaring an emergency. Introduced by councilmember Patterson.
We're okay?
So we're on second...
That's on second reading, third next week.
We're going to do third next week? Okay. And so then ordinance is for first reading, ordinance 8214. An ordinance closing Park Place and a portion of Court Street on Tuesday, September 30th, 2014, with a rain date set for Wednesday, October 1st, 2014, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. for a barbecue sponsored by the Joint Police Advisory Council, J-PAC, and declaring an emergency. Introduced by councilmember Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. We discussed this earlier in committee.
Do you suspend?
No. We'll vote on Tuesday. So I think everyone understands what this, what this is for.
Okay, and so we're, this is first reading, and we're going to pass it next week? Is that...
Question.
Yes, okay, regular session. And we have a resolution for third reading, Resolution 1114. A resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the Athens County Auditor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of Resolution 1114.
Second.
This particular resolution had its first reading back in July. We have been notified of our tax rates that have been approved by the Budget Commission and then it's forwarded to us by the county auditor. And the inside village rates for Athens Township is 2.6 and for Kanan Township, 2.4.
All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 1114 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted and...
We are going to hear how Baker...
Okay. Wait a minute, we need...
Oh, that's not really...
Okay, the resolution needs everybody's signature, so... Okay, we are adopt, we are adjourned. Okay. I'm stretching.